It is 5:30 and we welcome you to the City Council Level 10 meeting this evening. This is September 28th. It's amazing how quickly the months go by. Summer is turning into fall. But again, we welcome everyone. As I mentioned, Councillor Peralta and Councillor Gearing or Gary are going to be a bit late tonight, but they will be joining us a little later. So with that being said, this evening, our Level 10 agenda, we've got four items that we're going to address in our agenda this evening. We're going to complete a sideshow presentation presenting the draft Vision Traction Organizer for the McMinnville City Council. During that presentation, if we have questions, I'm sure Wendy will answer questions, but we'll have an opportunity to question the presentation. And then Wendy will lead us through a discussion portion of our time this evening in our Level 10. But the end result is that we're looking to determine a path for the adoption of the Vision Traction Organizer tonight. And so with that, as always, I recognize our consultant, Wendy Stassen, former City Councillor, to introduce the topic this evening of the Vision Traction Organizer. She sent revised slides out, so you have two sets if you printed them. If not, I'm sure we will put them in the presentation mode. So Wendy, welcome. It's good to have you here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's wonderful to be here and I'm excited for this. This slideshow is really the culmination of a lot of work that the City Council's been doing all year. It's really the hub of what could be, depending on what the City Council decides, the work going forward on EOS. And you'll see as we go through it, it's really the City Council's work that I just pulled together out of all of the visioning and the conversations that have happened as we've been working through EOS over the course of this year. So it's fun to be able to come back and to bring back these, this material to the council. My hope is that over the next two sessions, the council will head into next year with an almost completely, complete VTO, Vision Traction Organizer, which will then guide the work going forward on EOS. So can everybody see my, hold on, I'm gonna put my, I'm gonna switch screens so I'm not looking, hold on a second here, oops. I'm not looking off to my side screen here. I'm gonna switch you guys over to the side screen. Now, go. Okay, now I'm gonna share screen so that I'm looking straight ahead into the camera. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
We're in good shape, Wendy.
Great. Okay, so this is, as Scott set us up, this is the, looking at the, what's called the Vision Traction Organizer. I've put together a proposed draft of the first two elements of the Vision Traction Organizer, the core values and the core focus. And we're gonna look through that tonight. And my goal would be to have a really robust conversation around that. And at our next session, where I present the rest of the Vision Traction Organizer, to be able to adopt a Vision Traction Organizer for the city of McMinnville. So for the City Council of McMinnville. So what we're doing tonight is we're gonna answer the question about why a Vision Traction Organizer is really a way for a team to have alignment across a vision that then feeds into what each step that you take in the direction of that vision. And so we're gonna talk about the why of the vision. We're gonna present, present the first two sections of the draft of the Vision Traction Organizer, which is the core focus, the core values and the core focus. I'm gonna answer any questions. I'm gonna lead this, any discussion that we have. And then we're gonna determine the path to attain commitment, which we'll talk about a little, in a little bit more detail when we get to that part, which includes buy-in and clarity. So reminding us what EOS is, that we've been working on over the course of the year. This is a visual representation of EOS. It is a system for building a vision, putting in place the systems to achieve traction so you can reach your vision and keeping your team healthy. So these are the elements of EOS. And the one that we're working on today is this vision component of EOS. So why do the work to put together a Vision Traction Organizer with really what we're looking for is alignment around a vision? Because without alignment across the council focused on a clear vision, the council members can be rolled by the waves of external turbulence, which we have experienced quite a bit of this year. And we're, if we're rolled by that turbulence, it makes it difficult for us to provide clear cohesive leadership as a body. So this next slide is a demonstration of what the vision can help you to do. It's, I use a metaphor of the vision as being like a lighthouse, that it creates cohesiveness as a body. It creates the ability to be a stable presence even in turbulent times. It allows you to create a long-term strategic vision and consistency that cannot be derailed by turbulent conditions. So when you have that, that vision, that you have incremental steps to go in that direction, you're less taken off-guard by the things that you, that you face in the course of traveling that path. The ability to stay calm and inspire others with your strength, clarity and consistency. There's Adam. And then a path to implementation of the strategic vision. So we're here so I can see everybody. So, and this is a slide just to say with clear vision, of course, you can then be a lighthouse for others. So this is a snapshot of the Vision Traction Organizer. And you guys will see the full Vision Traction Organizer in just a few minutes. A Vision Traction Organizer, which is called VTO for short, is a roadmap that takes you from today to 10 years from now. The VTO walks you through eight simple questions and we'll look at each one of those questions. We're only going to be talking about two of them today, but we'll look at how we're gonna address the other, the rest of the eight questions in a little bit. And with your answers, you build a solid strategy for where you need to be in 10 years. It creates a plan to get there. So the Vision Traction Organizer combines a long-term vision with the everyday traction you need to actually keep the vision, keep moving in that direction. So it's both the big picture and the incremental steps in one place. And it really, it really forms the backbone of the EOS work. We've been kind of experimenting with some facets of EOS, but once you have a Vision Traction Organizer, it really puts structure around the work that you're doing and where you're going with that work. So let me move guys back over, over here to the other screen. So the eight questions are, the two that we're gonna talk about today are the core values and the core focus. You'll see them in yellow and we're gonna talk about those in the meeting tonight. The next ones are, what is your 10-year target? What is your stakeholder citizen communication strategy? What is your three-year picture? And what is your one-year plan? We're gonna talk about that. We're gonna complete that part of the Vision Traction Organizer and review that in the October meeting. And then the EOS rocks in the issues list and the issue solving track is something that will be in subsequent work that the city does with EOS after we've gotten clarity around those first six. So synchronized action with a common clear vision of what is to be achieved produces significant results. So here is your draft Vision Traction Organizer. Well, I'm gonna make this bigger. Does everybody see the Vision Traction Organizer instead of those slides now?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so I wanna, these are the first two sections that we're gonna talk about tonight. And I wanna make sure that everybody remembers and knows where these came from, because they are not from me, they're from you guys. So I'm gonna take you to the notes that, that I drew from in order to create these core values. I'm gonna make it bigger so everybody can see. So if you remember, you guys have been doing a lot of thought work. And one of the exercises that you guys had was to share the top five leadership attributes or traits that you identified in your preparation exercise. So one of the reasons you do that exercise is because it brings to light what you value most. This is a leadership body. Your job is to be leaders and to produce clear policy for giving direction to the city and the citizens look to you for that. So this brings out what your top values are as leadership values are. So here in your, I'm gonna have to get back to, hold on a second, I'm gonna go back to So this, the thing that's remarkable about this is that we have very different leaders on this council. And these six, I used almost every value. So there's a lot of alignment on core values across this council. And the reason that's important is because even if you disagree on issues, your core values are already in alignment. And if you identify them, then you can start really synchronizing how you work together and in a way that unites you even when you're disagreeing. So these are the six that I extracted from that exercise. The first one is service to our community. We offer ourselves in humble service to our community and give charity and love to others through this service. The second one is compassion. We serve with compassion and empathy for others. The third is exceptional communication. We listen deeply to understand and choose our communication carefully to enhance clarity, mutual understanding and our effectiveness as leaders. The fourth one is high integrity. We're principle-centered leaders guided by a moral compass and a higher purpose. The fifth is courage. In all things we face, we have courage to persevere together to create effective solutions. And the sixth one is clarity of vision. We work to be clear in our thinking and decisive in our action to create a clear inspirational path for those we lead. So I was, when I went back and looked at the visioning exercise again, I was struck by that when we first did it. When I started processing it, I was, I was really impressed with how easily, I thought I would have more work to do to narrow it down, but how easily all of the voices on this team could be represented in these six values. And so the second one, the core focus, also comes from a visioning exercise, a different visioning exercise. So I'm gonna go into that visioning exercise so you guys, I'll refresh your memories on what you guys did. So this visioning exercise was around why you joined the council. And so each of you gave your inspiration for becoming a part of the council. And I went through and I highlighted and I identified what the common threads were. And really, the core focus is about your why. So I'm sure you're familiar with finding your why. Why are we even here? Why are we putting this energy and effort into this? In this exercise, you are identifying your why. And so let's go back here. So this is what I extracted from that. So the purpose, cause or passion is this why statement. And my suggested why statement is, in humble service, we are called to work hard together to solve the challenges of today in order to leave an exceptional legacy for future generations. And these were the most powerful threads. Of course, service, humble, working together. And the challenges was mentioned and almost everybody said that they stepped up to be on the council because they saw challenges that they felt they could help with. And many of the councillors mentioned that they wanted to leave something for future generations. That was, the problems were being solved for future generations and legacy. And then the niche, a proposed niche for this body, that's what you guys are tasked with doing in a, in a statement. That's your product. That's what you're putting out to the world is we provide inspirational leadership to the city of McMinnville in alignment with a clear vision. We provide policy direction that orchestrates synchronized, consistent, effective action to move the city towards the successful manifestation of this vision. So before I move off of this, because we are going to talk about some other things before we go into deep conversation about this in the slideshow, any questions for me about the core values, core focus? And I'll come, I'll put this back on the screen when it's time for discussion.
Wendy, Wendy, just an observation from my perspective, for what it's worth. You know, it took us a lot, a lot of introspect inside of us to come up with these core values, core focus. And sometimes it's hidden. And unless you really are going through exercises that make you think deeply, you can overlook those core values and those core focuses. And so I look back now and say, you know, those exercises you had us do, and at the time, we were just going, woo, what is this all about? We're given a little bit of insight into who and what we are, really comes back to help us in this VTO process. And I think if we have that displayed or close at hand as we go into our meetings and as we go into our discussions, I think it can help us really know that we're, we have more traits that are alike than the, more traits that take us apart. If, if, if we really realize who and what and why we're here. So just, just some thought.
Absolutely. And I, you know, I have been impressed all along with how much, when you get to the higher level conversations, which is the vision level, the purpose, the, the why, why you guys are here, there is so much agreement across this body that the work is not as daunting as you would imagine. Right? Because if you have agreement at that level and you learn how to problem solve, hold on, I'm gonna get this over here so I can start sharing again. You learn how to problem solve together through the lens of your common vision, then you can do amazing things. And I see a lot of that alignment already. I think we just need to acknowledge, acknowledge it's there and continue to work on building that strength that you already have. So I'm gonna go ahead, oh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, just one last point that I think is really kind of interesting, because I think sometimes as we're making headway, our council meetings and our discussions and our work sessions have been so much, so much more amiable as we're moving forward and, and, and helping us tremendously. But know that this is an ongoing path. Just because we've made some incremental steps right now, I hope members of the council don't think we're all done, because I think there's much more to develop as we are here. You know, we're, we're almost, we're almost nine months into this process and, and it's taken us all this hard work to get where we are and we still need to continue to develop it. So I, I think in sometimes in busy lives like we have, there's a tendency to say, okay, we've learned our lessons, we're more respectful, we listen, we follow Robert's rules or whatever, and so we're there. But I would suggest to the council that we could be so much more effective, so much better as we utilize the tools of traction moving forward. So I just throw that out.
Yeah, absolutely. And one thing I will compare it to is it's easy to, that's one of the reasons I put a crew team on here. It's easy to think of physical mastery as, because it's so tangible. This is, these are muscles. These are, this is like you're, you're practicing, doing deliberate practice to become an exceptional team. And that does not end. It's incremental improvements in a direction. And so to your point, you're gonna see improvements, but it does, it's not a reason to get off the bus, right? It's not a reason to stop the movement forward. It, it's a sign that you're on the right track, but it's, there's always gonna be the next challenge. And as you guys get stronger, you'll be challenged in different ways, right? So I definitely agree, Mr. Mayor, that it's important to remind ourselves that it's a, we're, we're, it's a marathon, not a sprint. And that there, there, there will be different work, but there will be more work to come, right? So the next, the next slide is to remind ourselves of, I've been getting this question a bit to, of reminding ourselves of what the big picture is, of what, what we're doing working on EOS and where it fits in the work that you guys are doing on the DIES. So I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about that. How does EOS influence and how does it weave into what you guys are doing and making your policy decisions and the work on the DIES? So first, I'm gonna review traction as a whole is really about strategic implementation. So you guys, we've talked a lot about strategic planning and strategic planning is really, really important. EOS has that as an aspect of what you do. And that is these first, these first four items are all around strategic planning. So having that bigger picture, your core values that we just went over, your core, which is the who and the how. So who we are and how we perform our work together. The core focus is the why and the what. So we talked about the, the purpose and the niche. So the purpose was the future, the legacy to future generations. The what was the making policy in alignment with vision. So core focus, the 10-year target gives you that bigger, like thinking about the White House again, that long vision, making sure we're in the right forest, right? Making sure that we know where we're going and we all agree on where we're going so that the decisions that we're making today and the incremental steps we're making are, are taking us there. And then the three-year vision is a shorter term vision that we're, we're bringing it in by that many years. So it's closer, but it's still a long-term vision that then you'll use to inform your immediate work. So the, the part that's exceptional about EOS is that the danger of, oh, Zach's here, good. The danger of having strategic planning without something else is that it never gets to the ground. And so this is one thing that I think EOS is exceptional at. It's strategic implementation. So the implementation step, we call traction in EOS, that's the one-year goals, what you're planning on accomplishing this year. That's going to lead you eventually to the 10-year target and three-year vision. The quarterly rocks is what you're gonna do every 90 days to get you to your one-year goal, which then will get you to your 10-year target and three-year vision, right? And there's ways to check to see if we're on track or off track, and that's our scorecards. Effective meetings are your deliberate practice. So going back to when you, to sports, they talk about the way to mastery is that the consistent deliberate practice on the most important things is what leads to somebody having mastery in sports. It's similar with this. Your, your Level 10 meetings are your way of building those muscles to be able to be highly effective at, at interacting using core values, at solving the most important issues, at being a cohesive team that's able to, that is able to have high topic tension and low interpersonal tension and produce amazing results, right? So the Level 10 meetings are really about deliberate practice. And then stakeholder communication plan, that's how you talk about external to your, your body, what your key things that you, your messaging to the outside world. And so all of number two is about implementation. All of number one is about that higher level vision. They go together and they, you're constantly working on different elements of those things as you go through the EOS traction implementation. So let's talk about the Level 10 meeting, because I've had a couple of questions about this. Like how is it different than what you guys do on the DIES? So the Level 10 meeting as we're practicing it, and again, EOS comes from the side of, of the private sector. So this is a little bit different than the way Winsome, for example, implements EOS, because we do talk about things related to our output in Level 10 meetings in, at Winsome. What we've decided to do for the City Council, because of the specific nature of the work that you guys are doing, is the Level 10 meeting is really your opportunity to work on the business of the City Council. You're not talking about output work. So you're not talking about making decisions about the urban growth boundary or about the airport. The things, those will still come to you on the DIES. What it does do, that what the Level 10 does do is it makes you stronger as a team and it's your opportunity to practice tackling the most challenging issues related to the City Council functioning. So it, it gets you guys in the habit of addressing challenging issues. It enables you to practice embodying the core values and we'll look at that in, in a more specific way in a little bit. So you'll be practicing living your core values and how you work through these issues, right? And then it, it enables you to practice reaching commitment as a team. So we'll talk about what commitment, what it means to get to commitment. But what happens is as you're practicing these things, it's just like if you practiced, you went out into the driveway and, using basketball as an example, and you practiced your shooting, that event, that translates to better performance in the game. So this is your deliberate practice. This is you going out in the driveway as a team and shooting 100 free throws, right? This is you guys having clarity about the skills that may be lacking for this team and practicing getting better at it. So the Level 10 meeting is a little bit different than the way it's practiced in private in, say, a company like Winsome. But we, you are doing, the practice that you do in this meeting will affect your performance on the DIES. You won't be deciding, making those decisions in the Level 10 meeting. Does anybody have questions about that? Because I've had individuals ask me questions about that and I wanted to make sure that everybody on the body, in case other people had questions about that, had the opportunity to ask those questions in a meeting with the whole council. No? Okay. Everybody's so quiet tonight. Okay, so a couple of things I wanted to bring up. We, I'm using the last Level 10 meeting as an example. There were lessons learned in that last Level 10 meeting and I wanted to reflect back to you guys some of the things I observed. Two of the primary things that I observed that led to us deciding to do this particular, that this was the next step for us on our path on EOS. One is that it's hard to come to, to identify, discuss and solve a specific if you don't have a shared, the higher level shared vision in place. And so one of the things I saw in our IDS session is that I think that when we go back to IDS-ing, after we have finished this VTO, you guys are gonna have more of that common ground and more of that clear alignment on vision to be able to be more successful in the, the specific IDSs. So that was one of the things I observed that we needed to work on next. The second thing was, one of the things, the observations that I heard from some of the councillors about, you know, why are we talking about this and how there's a lack of clarity? That has to do with the fact that they, the team didn't reach commitment. So there was a lot of conversation or people were very engaged in talking, but they, the team never converged on a decision that they were, achieved commitment. team never converged on a decision that they were, achieved commitment on. And so we're gonna talk a little bit about what commitment looks like on a team. Because I saw that we weren't able to do that in that IDS, I think that's a muscle that we need to work on, on this body, is how you get to commitment on a, on a team. So commitment is, to achieve commitment, you need to achieve two things that are related milestones. One is buy-in. And, and buy-in, it's important to understand that this is not consensus. Buy-in is the achievement of honest emotional support. This is when the team is very, very strong at everybody talking through the subject thoroughly. So everybody feels heard. And then a decision can be made that, that council, some of the counselors, it might be different than what they thought individually, but because of how the conversation was handled and because of how well it was vetted, there's emotional buy-in. Like, we talked about this with regards to the governing rules, that, that, I think it was the number one or number two, that once the decision is made, that the council, individual counselors will support the decision even if it's not your, your opinion, if it wasn't what you thought. So if that's not the case, that a city counselor is willing to do that, you haven't achieved commitment. You haven't achieved buy-in with regards to that particular decision. So one of the things I saw in that Level 10 meeting is we didn't achieve buy-in. We didn't get to the point where all of the counselors felt like they had been heard enough and that the decision was made with enough voices on, at the table, that they had emotional buy-in to the decision and went away from it saying, yep, I'm 100% in support. The process was right, and even though it wasn't exactly what I thought, it's the right decision for us to make, right? So buy-in is the first thing, and then clarity is the second thing. So there also was a mention that, like, you know, what are we doing here? And a lack of clarity about what was being decided and what wasn't. So clarity is the second part of commitment, that everybody has the same picture in that bubble above their head of what is being committed to and what, what the next steps are to achieve that commitment. So absolute clarity and alignment around a, a decision is the second part of it. So that's one thing that, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Wendy, so this is, I think, very important, that as we're going through a Level 10 and we're going through a IDS and we're having good discussion, we probably need to bring these two questions up before we move to the solution.
Yep.
Because if you go into solution without buy-in and clarity to what you're buying in, then you're still scattered all over the plate, all over the page. Is that correct?
Yeah. That, that actually is a great way, again, going back to deliberate practice, is to be overtly understanding that, you know, this body could use some more practice on getting to commitment. So you can overtly ask, does everybody feel buy-in on this topic? And if not, what do we need to do? What else do we need to talk about? What stone is still not, that have we still not considered? And it will create a more robust conversation that might give you additional things to talk about. Like, probably one of the reasons that you don't reach buy-in is because people don't feel like they've been heard. So they feel like there's elements missing that haven't been considered. And so it actually creates a way better solution if you strive to get to buy-in, because you will, maybe they're right. Maybe there is another angle that if we understood it better, we would may be making a different choice about what the solution is, right? So it is, I think, being conscious and making it a, a part of the process to ask that question and letting it go back to discussion. You can go into solutions and then back to discussion and then into solutions again, right? Will give you a better result, and it will feel way different. Like, you guys, what you guys were feeling in that meeting, that some people expressed, was the feeling that there wasn't commitment. There wasn't buy-in, there wasn't clarity, right? So overtly working on that in the, in a meeting where you're actually asking yourselves and each other whether you have buy-in and whether you have clarity is a great way to work on that. Everybody's talking, speaking the same language. Everybody knows what buy-in is, and they can ask themselves, do I have buy-in on this? Well, not yet, and this is why, right? So yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Mayor. Any questions about this before we go on to the next thing? Okay, so I'm, we're gonna go back to the core values and core focus. I know I might go over it again, because I know Counselor Geary, you came in a little bit late, and Counselor Peralta, I'm not sure, Counselor Garvin, if you had seen them either. But your mission tonight, should you choose to accept it, is to work on achieving commitment on this team to the set of core values and core focus in your VTO. And so the steps to take to get to that would be to ask questions, to provide constructive feedback, to practice operating through the shared core values. So that does two things. One, you're practicing using them and trying them on, taking them for a test drive and see how they feel as a lens that you look through, that you're going to be looking through in all of the work that you do going forward. And the, and the core values here, looking through that lens of this mission is, for service, you think of the good of the whole over the good of the individual. So as you guys are working through this, you're thinking of the higher, the higher purpose, the, what's best for the whole. B would be to treat each other with compassion and empathy. So you're practicing that. You, you, one of the core values that came through really clearly is that leaders that you admire are compassionate and empathetic. So if you practice with each other, then it will be easier to offer that outside of your, outside of your team as well. Practice deep listening and communicating to foster open dialogue and greater mutual understanding. So this is a great opportunity to be practicing being a part of a team that really listens deeply to, to understand, even if you don't agree with what somebody's saying. If you have really thoroughly understood it, that's a step closer to having a great decision that's made as a body instead of individuals that are functioning autonomously. And it's a step closer to buy-in as well. And it also increases trust. If, if somebody really deeply listens to you and understands what you're saying, then it's a sign of respect. So practice deep listening and communicating to foster open dialogue and greater mutual understanding. Have courage to persevere until you achieve the mission. So don't, don't plan on stopping until you guys have, are successful. I mean, just have the courage to persevere. And then clarity of vision, work to be clear and decisive. So any questions on that mission? And I'm gonna go back to the slide that shows the core values and core focus, so that the people who weren't here when we were on that slide can see it. But any questions on what, what you're trying, and we're not going to vote on it tonight, but what I'd like to do is have the, the dialogue finished and have you guys, basically, we know what we need to do to be ready to vote on at the next meeting. Because the next meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at the rest of the VTO, and we want to be talking about that part of the VTO, not this part of the VTO. Does that make sense? So full dialogue and discussion to where you get commitment in this meeting, even though you're not voting, on this part of the VTO. Okay, any questions on that before I flip back to the core values, core focus? All right. Let me just go back some slides. Oh, I missed one slide before I release you. So I chose to put this one on there. This is the last slide, and I chose a quote by Steve Jobs that says, "People who are crazy enough to think they can change the world are the ones who do." And the reason I put that quote on there is because I think that if you guys commit to this, it will be, you will be changing the world in a very significant way. If you look at the way politics and the world is today, it is very fractured. And being a team that embodies the kind of work that this team would embody with that alignment around values and the ability to solve problems, the way you would be able to solve problems as you practice this, will, it would be revolutionary for local government. And I think if you guys attain that, you're gonna need to share what you learn with other city governments so that they also can be a model of excellence in government. So for me, it goes way beyond McMinnville, and I would love to see you guys. I think the only thing that stands in your way is getting to commitment on this and being willing to do the work, because you guys have amazing people in the seats that could totally be successful at this work. So that was just, no information on this slide, just the reason that I'm here tonight. Okay, so let me stop sharing and go back to the core values slide.
So Wendy, is the core value slide in Google Docs? Or will you make it available in Google Docs?
Sure, it is in Google Docs, and it's also a link on this slideshow. But yes, I think it's already shared with you, Mr. Mayor, but it can also, it's also a separate document.
Okay.
Because it's going to be your VTO that gets carried on after you guys have approved it. It will get carried on. You guys will be, this will not be a, a document that's put on a shelf. This is gonna be in, a document that you will be actively using in your implementation steps. So we want it to be in a usable form that people can look at frequently, right? As they're doing their work. Okay, so I'm gonna go through one more time, and, and for the city counselors who weren't here, these core values and this core focus were from you, not from me. And I'm gonna go again into the documents that I used to create these. So if you remember, I've been putting you through the paces with the thinking exercises before these meetings. The core values came from the thinking exercise where you shared the top five leadership attributes or traits that you identified in your preparation exercise. And I, like I said, when I initially showed you guys this, it was remarkable, the alignment you already have on the higher-level vision of what you guys would like to create. One comment that I will make is that the unique thing is that you guys chose all individuals, and you guys would be working to embody as a leadership body these principles, which is, would be a very, very powerful thing, right? So there is a slight difference, but I think it's, it's something that would make it even more powerful for you guys to be in alignment around these core values. So the core values that I extracted from that exercise were, number one, service to our community. We offer ourselves in humble service to our community and give charity and love to others through this service. Number two, compassion. We serve with compassion and empathy for others. Number three, exceptional communication. We listen deeply to understand and choose our communication carefully to enhance clarity, mutual understanding, and our effectiveness as leaders. Number four, high integrity. We are principle-centered leaders guided by a moral compass and a higher purpose. Number six, courage. In all things we face, we have courage to persevere together to create effective solutions. And number six, clarity of vision. We work to be clear in our thinking and decisive in our action to create a clear inspirational path for those we lead. And then the second part is the core focus. And the core focus is a combination of two things, purpose, cause, or passion, which is basically your why, why you show up every day, why you work very, very hard on this body. And that was, was taken from this exercise. This was a little bit farther back, so you guys, in May, so you guys might need to refresh your memory on it. So this was when you guys told us why you decided to do this work, right? And so you guys gave us an idea of what motivated you to be on this body. And out of that, we got our purpose, cause, cause or passion, your why statement, and that is, in humble service, we are called to work hard together to solve the challenges of today in order to leave an exceptional legacy for future generations. So many of you talked about service. You talked about seeing challenges that you wanted to solve, and you talked about leaving things better for the future generations. So we captured that in your why statement. And then your niche is what you do. This is the product that you create for the world, and that is, we provide inspirational leadership to the city of McMinnville in alignment with a clear vision. We provide policy direction that orchestrates synchronized, consistent, effective action to move the city towards the successful manifestation of this vision. So dialogue. Who has questions, thoughts, comments? What do you wanna say? Counselor Chenoweth, we're starting with you.
You might have read my lips.
Yep.
Um, I don't know how to put this into words. So I guess one thing that I see lacking in what I read here, and it's there, but it's not clearly articulated, is that you did a great job of articulating that our society is fractured, our political climate is fractured. But nothing in this, to me, speaks to fixing that. And setting the example, I mean, it does generically, but not specifically, setting the example on how we should be thinking to do that. I'm, 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 you know, there's been a couple of examples, I'm not gonna call them out, because then people get on the defensive. But there's been a couple of pretty clear examples where we, as a group, come in with predisposed opinions, we share all our thoughts, and we walk away unchanged. And we didn't come to a decision that all of us could accept, and that's why we failed buy-in. We, we came to a decision that the majority could accept, but not all of us could accept. So I'm, I'm curious how, if and how, we could get that as part of what we're buying into as a group, that we're looking for solutions that not just a majority accepts, but that all can accept. That doesn't mean we all get what we want, and that doesn't mean we all are, 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 you know, one person is getting their way. It just means that there was enough in the decision-making process that we all can agree on the outcome. And, and, and I'm concerned, because that is, is, it's called diplomacy, it's called statesmanship, and it's a dying and lost art. And, and I, it just seems to be, to me, I'm, I'm waxing eloquent, I'm sorry, but it seems to me to be missing component in all of this. So I'll say that for now, and maybe more will come later.
Great. Okay, Remy, Counselor Grabkin.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of feed off of what Chris is talking about, Counselor Chenoweth is talking about. And I think that that, that missing piece, that missing element, I don't know that that can be scripted or put into specifically a document further than it is in this document. I, I mean, I can say there have been many decisions that have been made that I have not agreed with in my time on council, and, and I've been dissatisfied with the outcome. But then, as those things play out, and what I feel like Wendy is trying to pull out from us is, I don't go, well, so-and-so voted for it this way, or, you know, well, if I had to had my way, it went to bad, you know, I, all of that, just, it's, the, the body has come to this decision. And so as we move forward now, how do we integrate that? And if it's still something that we see needs changing, then how do we demonstrate that over time as opposed to kind of, as Counselor Chenoweth said, like going back to the same dispute or trying to rehash something? And so I, I think that that part, kind of, just that- And so I, I think that that part, kind of, just that has to come from within in, in recognizing that we won't always agree, and we won't always feel great about the outcome of a decision of the body. But what we can feel great about is that the decision-making process was thorough, and that sometimes things will land where we think they should, and sometimes things will land where other people that are part of the body think they should. And then how can we best support that? And hopefully, I kind of addressed what Counselor Chen, what I heard Counselor Chenoweth saying. Thanks.
That's great. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Oops, we need to unmute, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry. Summary, summarizing the two things I've heard from Chris and Remy would be, I, I think there needs to be a process where we spend enough time to have the discussion. If all points are played on the table, then, then we can make a determination. And, and because we've had that good discussion and all things were on the table, that goes back to the piece where we might be able to accept it more than when we didn't understand people's points of view. And it goes back to having respect and giving credence to what people are saying and having enough trust in what they're saying is, is appropriate and true, and, and is at the best interest of people. I think sometimes we by-step why this decision would be good for our constituents, and we keep it more close to who we are and what we want to see happen. So I think that discussion piece is critical in, in this, in this whole dialogue. And I'll, I'll be very honest, you know, I've seen, I've seen people being brought from one point to another point in this group because of a good thorough discussion and understanding the, the core values that drive that decision. So I, so, you know, that's kind of where I'm at, is, you know, I, I think we, we set ourselves up to, to be able to have a majority rule. That's why we have six, and then if we can't, we have seven, so that we can move on. And I'd hate to see us, because something didn't go our way, that we use three or four meetings to continue to persuade why we ought to go a different way once a decision's been made. Just a thought.
I caught up to you, Mr. Mayor. Who else has some on, on that or some other aspect of core values, core focus?
Yeah, I, I think Zach jumping in here. I think I agree with Mayor and Councilor President Drabkin's responses and thoughts. I also just don't want the, the desire for unanimous consent or unanimous good feelings or something like that to be used as a, you know, guise for subterfuge, to grind everything to a slow halt. We've got a lot of good work to do in front of us, and that just seems like it may be a false bar to be able to hit and unrealistic and, and not needed. I mean, I think, you know, I think what you're getting at a little, Wendy, is we've got to all just come, sit down at the table with an understanding that whatever happens in the process is, is, is good regardless of if you're on the high end or the low end, or on the agreed side or the disagreed side, and, and then move on to the next one. The, the group could make a concerted good effort to, to explain and, and reason, and then at some point we move on. So I, I think, and that's my two cents on that.
Anybody else want to weigh in on, on this?
This is Sal. I'm not sure if you can hear me. I'm kind of having a problem with my phone, but if you can.
Yeah, we can.
Oh, good, okay. Yeah, I, I agree with, you know, a lot of the comments that have been said. I mean, I think the most important thing is that we have a fair process and that people have an opportunity to make their positions heard, and that there's enough time for, you know, if there are changes that need to be made when we make policy decisions, that we have enough time for staff to take those changes and, and make them. I think that's, for me, a bigger concern than, you know, unanimity or anything like that. If people get to share their perspective, and then there's time to respond to the policy direction, for me, that's plenty.
And I will say, I'm just going to jump in here with a, a comment. So what Chris is bringing up is actually an important part of what you would be practicing. So when, when Chris talks about what he has observed and felt, he just didn't, he didn't feel like he was heard enough for him to have buy-in on that decision. It does not mean you wait for consensus, but it does mean you get stronger and stronger at having that robust conversation where you, people are, do all feel that they had, they were done with the conversation, and that the, the points were all brought up and considered, and the solution really represented what the group wanted, considering all and respecting all voices at the table. And so I think what is, is being brought up here, it's all true. What Chris said is part of what you guys will be working on getting better at, right? And, and that is having that robust conversation where you're really hearing each other, making great decisions that may not be like Remy and Mr. Mayor and Zach and Sal were all talking about, may not be what the individual thought of when they first sat at the table, but, but that there was consideration of all ideas in coming up with the solution, right? So not having closed minds when you sit at the table to have a conversation, because that can be felt, right? So having that openness, having a conversation where people are really deeply listening, one of your core values, is not an easy thing. It's an easy thing to say, it's not an easy thing to practice, especially when you have strong feelings about something that you're talking about, right? Because we all come with our perspective. So it really is a muscle that you guys will not instantly have. It's a muscle that you need to consciously be working on, which is what you're going to, your deliberate practice in the Level 10 meetings will challenge this. And you guys will bring this up, say, I don't feel like I've been heard enough, you know, or whatever. And balance out that, like what Zach brought up, that like, I feel like this is grinding the conversation to a halt. Both of those are great points and should be talked about, right? That's part of learning. Where's the balance? Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Wendy, it takes us back to your slide of unpackaging commitment. You know, when we went over that, we said that that ought to be maybe reviewed every time we go into the IDS or the D of IDS, of saying, you know, we need to have buy-in, the achievement of honest emotional support. Commitment is not consensus. You know, it's, it's laid out very well on that particular slide. And number two is clarity. You know, have we brought clarity to what we're talking about and the impacts that that have? I, I just really like that slide. I start it, and, and it's one that I think in every Level 10, I'm going to bring and just review so that we have an understanding of what we're trying to do in the discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, really, you're asking yourself, what does this look like in practice, right?
Yeah.
What does it, what does commitment look like for this body? Like, you guys will be figuring it out together as you're practicing it with real issues. And, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, if you're overtly using the same language saying, okay, our goal is to get to commitment on this issue, let's figure out how we do that with this, with this body that's sitting in these seats, right?
Yeah.
So any other thoughts on?
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting to me how what I said was taken, and, and how that we have one that, of us that heard an attempt at subterfuge, which seems a bit on the pejorative side. But I, I, you know, that wasn't my intent at all. And, and I, and, and my intent wasn't even asking for unanimous outcomes, but rather that, that, that if we come into a body and, and enter into a discussion, and, and you said it well, Wendy, I'm going to try to say it without being harsh or negative, but if we come into a body with no intent to change our minds, that's felt, that's known, it's obvious. If we come in with negative preconceptions about each other, then the choice of wordings that we use is obvious and felt. And the result is going to be discussions that don't have buy-in. If, if we want buy-in, then we, we have to work toward buy-in. And that requires statesmanship, that requires diplomacy, that requires compromise, a word that is not liked by just about anybody these days. And if, if we're not willing to do that, even on things that are near and dear to us, then, then we're not going to have buy-in. We're going to walk away at times frustrated where we don't need to be. And I, I would like, you know, my, my view is like your last statement, you know, if you, if you think you can change the world, you might. I don't remember exactly how it was. But if you don't, if you want it just to be the status quo, the way every city's currently operating, then we're on a good path. And, and I'd like to see us go a different direction than what other governments have done. And I'd like to see us work toward learning how to make decisions that, that are ones that we all have buy-in, whether we agree with them or not. And there are times where I, you're, you're dead on. I don't feel like it's heard, I don't feel like it matters, I feel like I, the, the mindset came in, we're doing it this way, and that's how it's going to go. And that's unfortunate.
For Gary, you look like you want to say something. Are you looking at the ceiling just because it's interesting, or? Okay, who, anybody else want, want to comment? I think some of this, the stuff we're talking about is really in the practice, what we need to focus on in the practice of doing this. We won't just figure out the solution tonight, but I think they're very, very good points. And I think they're, are, these are things that we're going to have to work on in real time and surface them as they're happening so we can identify, we can start to become aware, and, and become aware of how this body needs to get to commitment. I mean, it's doing, this work is doing its job. Having this conversation is part of the job of, of reaching excellence and of learning how to do it differently, right? We're all human, and we have our, our tendencies. We're not born good at this stuff. So the iterative practice is going to be really important for this body. The first step to that is agreeing on what the vision is, agreeing to do the work, right? So that takes us back to the, let me go back to the slides. I don't know if I can go backwards on that. Thought screen share. So any other, share screen again. Any other thoughts on, see if this goes with me. Nope, it doesn't. Any other thoughts on these, whether or not, so back to Chris's point, that would be something, do we need to change our higher level vision? What I feel like in that is that it's, what Chris, what Chris brought up is a very, very good point that we need to be working on in our, in our deliberate practice, which is in Level 10 meetings. As we work together, if we're working through these core values, exceptional communication includes listening deeply to each other. So part of, already in these, this, part of these core values is if you really truly embody these core values and are listening deeply to each other, everybody would feel heard, right? So, and that's one of the things that encourages buy-in, right? Is that everybody feels heard, everybody feels respected, they truly, people truly feel like we made this decision together, even though it doesn't represent what my individual choice would have been, it is the right thing for this team. So other comments, again, our goal is to be comfortable that we have commitment across this body for the core values and core focus. Mr. Mayor?
Well, as I said before, and I'll, I'll share again, I think because of the way we've come up with these core values and the core focus, it was an exercise that was out of saying that we were building core focus and, and values. As, as I look at the responses that we gave that were deep-seated in our hearts, I can agree to the core values and focus, because I know where they came from, and it wasn't, it wasn't to the end that we thought they were going to come. We were just thought, thinking we were sharing with one another to share more of our inner feelings of leadership and what we are trying to be and become and why.
Yeah. And that's the, one of the benefits of that exercise is that if you, you weren't thinking of having an end in mind, you were trying to share what was, you know, in the deepest part, your most valued or your most admired leaders, and you see it more in other people than you can recognize it in yourself, right? You see in other people what you value. Like if you really admire someone, it's probably because they're reflecting a value that's very important to you. So it's easier to see what you value when you look at who you're drawn to and who you admire. And again, I'm very impressed with how much overlap there is on that level. Go ahead, Remy.
Thank you. You know, one thing that occurs to me, even just from the communication we had here today, is that while we may all highly value exceptional communication, we really have struggled recently to have good, clear communication here. And I see that repeatedly. And I don't, I'm not sure yet if that's because we have different communication, communication styles. I'm not sure if it's based on how we're really listening to each other. I'm not sure, maybe we do need to do some more, you know, communication practice, right? Chris, just the fact that you said you were interested to hear how I interpreted, I mean, I listened, I listened to you so intently, I really thought that I heard what you said, and then I was, and I was responding that. So, you know, if you felt like I didn't hear your intent, that is kind of, I don't want to say shocking, because I think there's been enough instances of miscommunication in the group that I'm not shocked by it. However, it still is surprising when, you know, I, I'm listening very intentionally to you and taking my time, I'm not thinking about my, what I'm, want to respond, I was listening to all of your thoughts. And then to hear you kind of feel taken aback by my or perhaps my and others' response, then that part is surprising. So to me, that brings back that if we, we all share this value of exceptional communication, what are we, what are we doing or how are we really practicing that in here? If this is our practice time, what are we really doing to practice communication so that we can start speaking the same language and, and really hearing each other? And also, I just have to say that if anybody shows up already knowing how they're going to vote, that's really bad. That would be really bad. And, and that's not my experience. That's not my experience. And I've, I've had to vote against... That's not my experience, and I've, I've had to vote against what I want many times in here, as I know many people have, um, uh, for a variety of reasons. So, um, I know I always come to these meetings with a, uh, an, an openness, um, you know, I might know how I'm going to vote on the consent agenda, be, if there's nothing exceptional that needs to be pulled off of it. But, you know, when it comes to things that we're really working through and vetting, things that aren't just a, a license renewal of some sort or something like that, um, I, I, I think that, that is such an important component to us working well together. And I think, I, I, I think there's, um, I think that that is part of, I, I've thought in the past that that, um, was part of the culture of this council, um, uh, is coming with an open-mindedness, um, regardless of the materials before us. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Remy. Okay, other, other thoughts on these core values and core focus? And again, we're, we'll be working, so one of the things that they discovered, one of the things that core values came from was the Level 10 series, uh, the U.S. founder basically, uh, took them from Jim Collins. The core values, what they found in those studies, if you're not familiar with the Level 10, I mean, the, um, Good to Great series, sorry about that, the Good to Great series, they did studies of companies that, uh, were exceptional performers in comparison to their, um, their other companies in that market, their comparison group, over a period of 10 to 15 years, and they had, wrote four books about it. What, what traits did those companies have? And one of the traits was that they all had a sh- a set of core values that were shared by all. And the remarkable thing about that was that it didn't matter what the core values were, it mattered that they had them and that it was adhered, adhered to by all. So like, they could be, you know, totally different, the different groups that they studied that were exceptional performers could have totally different core values one from the other. The important thing is that they're shared by this body. So what I want you to be thinking about in yourself is, do these reflect core values that you would, you would, that speak to you, that you would be willing and able, you would, you would have buy-in to being the lens that you look through as you're working on, on, on your work on the city council and as a body on your work? So holding each other accountable to these core values, that it's, it's right for you, it's right for this body, that it's not missing something. So that the magic is in adopting it, having commitment to it, and embodying it, right? In your work, which is what Chris was talking about, embodying it in how you behave so that it makes changes. It makes changes, you improve on the things that you're weak at, you start to align on these core values, you start to hold each other accountable when you see that even though we feel like communication is exceptional, we're not practicing it right now, so let's figure out how we practice exceptional communication and deep listening to what Remy was saying. So it becomes a lens you look through with regards to how you approach all of your work. And, and it really changes, it, uh, goes into your personal life too. You, you might start using these at your dining room table. I mean, there's, uh, it is a pretty important step to agree on a set of core values across a body. And, um, so it's important that you guys think deeply about it now to make sure it's not missing something for you, and that you are willing to get to buy-in on these core values. So Counselor Garvin, did you have any questions? I don't think we've heard from you yet. Are you still here?
I'm still here. Don't have any questions on it, core values. You guys, uh, kind of shook those out on that last meeting in August that I missed, but I am happy with how they came out, and, uh, I would agree that, you know, us getting buy-in as a body moving forward even without consensus is, uh, is a path forward. I, I would concur with Zach that I think if we tried to go for consensus, we would definitely get bogged down, and I don't know if we'd ever get there, so, um, I'm definitely in favor of trying to get to a point where we get buy-in on our decisions versus, um, operating in silos with lack of communication or, uh, trying to get consensus, so. I think you guys did, did great coming up with those, the core focus, I'm still digesting, and I don't, I don't know, I guess I'm not 100% on that yet, but I'm trying to get there.
Okay. Great. Thank you for your feedback, Counselor Garvin. Okay, other, other comments from other counselors on core values, core focus, suggested edits? Okay, if we don't have any other comments, um, when these come back to you in your next meeting, what would you guys be willing to vote on, vote these core values and core focus in as being the, uh, focus of your work? It sounds like Counselor Garvin is on the fence still with regards to the core focus. Okay, we have a thumbs up from Counselor Draken and Mayor Hill, and Counselor Peralta, great.
Wendy, if, if, as we're looking at this-
Oh, Zach too, thanks Zach, sorry, Mr. Mayor. And counselor, thank you, Counselor Ricky.
If like, if, if Adam is looking at this and wants to make some suggestions, is it better to get a hold of you earlier so you could combine those and, and bring it in a form that we might have a, a brief discussion to include or not?
Yeah, and, and I think that's a great suggestion, uh, Counselor Garvin. Take your time to, to review them and think about what you would change to where it would more accurately reflect for you what the, uh, why and the what of this body would be. And if you can provide it before the meeting, I can bring it up as discussion in the next meeting. If we have buy-in on the core values, then I don't think that would be too much of a lift for us to do that in addition to the 10-year target and the three-year vision and, uh, um, communication with citizens part.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Chenoweth, we haven't heard from you, what are some of your thoughts on, uh, voting? Are you, uh, gonna provide us some feedback between the meetings, or would you be ready to, uh, vote the, these core values and core focus in, in the next?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with the core values, I, I, I was just adding some thoughts about what I would love to see, um, and apparently I'm alone in what I'd love to see, so I'm pretty much done there.
So what I would say about that, uh, is that I, I interpreted the conversation a little bit differently than that. I think that, um, I think that there is interest in, uh, working on what you brought up, and it actually produced a very thoughtful discussion. We're going to have challenges, that's, what you brought up is one of the challenges we have in practice, right? And so, I don't, um, I can tell that you feel like it shut down your thinking about this, and that's definitely not what we want to happen. I feel like as we're able to work through utilizing these core values and our deliberate practice on the Level 10s, we're going to be bringing up in real time when that happens, when what you brought up happens, so we can figure out how to pivot. Like, what do we need to do differently? Why is that, why is it that in certain instances, Chris, you haven't felt like you've been heard? That's what I heard. And that you didn't feel like you'd been heard enough to where it, uh, was considered as part of the solution. So even, even though, even though you agree that it shouldn't be consensus, in order for people to feel like they buy into the solution, they need to feel heard. That is, that's part of that slide, right?
Well, it's bigger than that. It's, it's bigger than that, you know? We, we, we as a society have broken down into our, into our, um, tribes, and, and the, the city council is no different. And, and I, I, I'd like to see, and it's, it's, it's a vision, whether it's a reality, whether it can happen or not, psh, I don't know, but I, I'd like to see us conquer the tribes, um, if we can here on the city council. And what I hear in the response is there's not a lot of interest in couns- in co- in, in conquering the tribe, the interest is in being in the majority tribe. And that, that, and I, and I understand that that may not be what's being meant to be conveyed, and so I don't want anybody to take that personally. Because I, I don't know that that's really, um, um, the intent. I, I would push back, I have watched enough of these meetings before I was a city counselor, and now that I am a city counselor, I still, I see this meeting after meeting after meeting, I can predict where the votes are going to go before I come into the meeting, and fairly consistently, I mean, like 95% of the time, I'm right. And, and that's not a bad thing altogether, um, but it says to me that the decisions, as much as we want to say we're coming in with an open mind, if we've done our homework, most of the time, we kind of know where we're going to go. And, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of shifting off of that position during the course of conversation that I see. And, and I'm, I'm kind of rambling, but, um, I, I didn't bring that up to say I couldn't agree with the core values the way they are. I think those are very well-written, um, they're, they're very, and, and, and the core focus I thought was very well-written. Um, and, and so I hope that in expressing kind of this greater overlying vision that I, I have, I didn't inadvertently come off as being negative to what was done, um, because that was not my intent at all, nor was it to be negative to anybody on the council, nor was it to put anybody on the defensive, so. I, I think that covers.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Chenoweth. Okay, Counselor Draken, oh, Council President Draken.
Thank you. Um, yeah, you know, I, I, I do find this conversation really interesting, because certainly, Chris, uh, when I was responding to you initially, there was nothing contrarian that I was saying. Oh, in fact, what I was trying to say was that I feel like we have lived this ideal, and, um, that in order to get to it, that kind of final step has to come from within, where you are satiated with the decision of the body, uh, regardless of where it aligns with, um, your individual ideals. So I, I actually felt like I was kind of saying the same thing of, yeah, yes, let's, let's go back to that, and I, and when, um, back to it is, is not that, uh, not that long ago that we were really, I think, able to exemplify that. And, uh, you know, I strongly desire to have good communication with you, um, and I think you know that, and we, we generally do, and then sometimes I'm surprised because I feel like what you hear me say is so far apart from, um, my intent, and, and today I feel like is one of those things where I was kind of saying, yes, let's, let's do that, let's work towards, um, moving as a body and understanding that ultimately we only get that movement when we put ourselves aside in that final moment and are able to, to push everything forward. And, and I don't want to eat up any time before Zach has a chance to speak, because I know we're fast approaching seven, so I'll, I'll leave it there.
We've got about three minutes.
Go ahead, Zach.
Uh, thanks, I just wanted to jump in and say, um, in response to Counselor Chenoweth, I, uh, am ha- happy, happy to get there, I just, it's really hard to, um, uh, believe what you say when I see what you do, and just for nine months now, meeting after meeting, prepared speeches and long diatribes and immovable positions from, from you, uh, haven't, haven't illustrated what you're hoping to get to, and so, uh, I'm, I'm trying to hold, hold back a little, because I don't, you know, but, uh, it's, it's frustrating to hear a lot of this stuff and to not see it out there, meeting after meeting. If you want to get there, we can jump into it, but perhaps why I'm losing some of the faith in this process is it's just, we're just diving further and further down and not, uh, getting any closer together, and, and a lot of it is because of, of, of sort of statements like, like that about how none of us are with you, and, and that, that's getting to a frustrating level. And if that's what we want to work on, let's spend time working on that, but, um, doing what we actually are saying we want to have happen needs to happen, and I'm, I'm not seeing that. But maybe I'm not looking for the right things or listening.
So, part of, uh, part of, uh, Zach would be learning to hold each other accountable in effective ways. So when, if you guys, uh, do attain, start working on an agreed-upon set of values, when you see that some of your team members are not abiding by those, there needs to be a mechanism for holding each other accountable in a way that is received well, right? And so some of the things that are surfacing here are high-top attention stuff that we'll need to work through in order to hold each other accountable without the other person feeling attacked, right? And, and I, the fact that it's coming up is super important. We're talking about it, right? And we're all at the table still, and that's how it gets solved. It can't, it can't get solved until it comes to the surface. So I would say the fact that this conversation is happening is part of what is amazing about the work that you guys are doing, because if it's buried, it won't get solved. Go ahead, Counselor Chenoweth, and I know we only have two minutes, but.
I only have 10 seconds. I just, I just want to correct that, I, I have literally read one prepared statement, I don't prepare statements, if, what, what I say is typically off the cuff and from my heart. If you think I'm preparing statements, then that's just my way of presentation, and, and it's not because that's what I'm doing. So I, I just want to clarify that.
So, so that communication core value is a great one that we should be working on, because it sounds like misunderstandings are happening right now in real time, right? Where somebody intends one thing and it's received in a different way, and so, uh, working on that communication where, uh, you're not, you are effectively making that link, you are communicating, listening deeply and communicating to enhance clarity. It's not clarity if you don't receive what the person is really trying to say, or it does, it enhances mutual understanding and effectiveness as a leadership body. So that's, it, you guys surfaced what we need to work on, right? I know, one minute, okay, I'm going to hand it back to Mr. Mayor. You will see the rest of the VTO in the October meeting, we'll have more discussion then. I'm going to bring this forward, please give me any feedback that you have, uh, before the next meeting, uh, so that I can make any edits that need to be made so that we can approve this portion of the VTO in the next meeting. And thank you, it was a great discussion.
And thank you, and thank you, Wendy, uh, we so much appreciate your skills and your, your experience and knowledge in this area to help us be better, and we know it's from your heart, so thank you. It is now, it just turned seven o'clock, and so we will dismiss or adjourn the Level 10 meeting and move over, you know, onto a new Zoom screen to resume or to start our council meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Progress.
Every time, or at least start making one, making one up. See, I ran to the, I ran to the kitchen before. I was trying not to say bathroom. I bailed from bathrooms. All that was coming.
That's funny. I like it.
It looks like we have a quorum. I know the others are on their way. Uh, our, our Level 10 ran right up to seven o'clock. So I am going to, uh, welcome everyone to the September 28th, 2021 City Council Meeting. And I will call on our city recorder to do roll call. Claudia?
Councilor Geary.
Wasn't expecting you to do it in order of handsomeness. Here.
Councilor Garvin. Uh, Council Minky.
Here.
Council Peralta. Council Chenoweth.
President.
Council President Drapkin.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you, Claudia. Um, I will, uh, let's see. Uh, Kelly, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, sure. All right.
We'll wait for the flag to come up. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, this evening, we have two proclamations. And so I'm going to, uh, um, start with the National Manufacturing Day. And so I know we've got, uh, uh, now let me take a look. We, uh, no, I'll go ahead to just read the proclamation. Whereas manufacturing and traded sector companies make a very significant contribution to the nation, the state, and local economy. And whereas the community is fortunate to be the home of over 90 world-class manufacturing and traded sector companies featuring a multitude of products made in McMinnville. And whereas those companies add to the vitality and prosperity of our community by employing over 2,000 people locally. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby claim October 1st, 2021 as McMinnville Made in Conjunction with the National Manufacturing Day. And in witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this the 28th day of September, 2021. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. And when we refer to McMinnville Made in Day, again, MEDP is a, is a part of that. And I see Heather on the line. Heather, would you like to just, uh, share just a couple of words as we talk about, uh, National Manufacturing Day?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We really appreciate you, uh, recognizing this day and proclaiming it National Manufacturing Day. Uh, McMinnville is home to about 93 manufacturing establishments that support our economy and employ, uh, up to 2,000 employees, as noted. And, uh, we appreciate this recognition and will continue our work to promote these traded sector industries in our community.
Thank you, Heather, and, uh, thank, uh, MEDP and your board and you serving as the interim, uh, director, all the good things that are happening and continue to happen during these very trying times of COVID. I know as we meet on a monthly basis, although we've got, uh, circumstances, circumstances around us that make it more difficult, we still are making headway. We've got good, uh, a good focus of people talking to us about, uh, moving to McMinnville and doing business here. So again, thank you. Next, we have a proclamation, a dedicating of September 15th through October 15th as Latinx Heritage Month. Whereas National, uh, Latinx Heritage Month celebrates the Latinx community and highlights its countless achievements. And whereas the observance began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was enacted into federal law on August 17th, 1988, calling upon the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremony, activity, and programs. And whereas many, uh, Latinx Americans trace their roots to the cultures of indigenous people of the Americas, including the Arwaks, the Aztecs, the Incas, the Mayas, and the Teutons, and some tracer, uh, roots to ancestors from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America, and Africa. And whereas September 15th through October 15th is recognized as National, uh, Hispanic Heritage Month, a time to honor and celebrate in, uh, in valuable ways, Latinx's contribute to the McMinnville's common goals to celebrate a diverse Latinx, uh, culture and to work towards a stronger, more inclusive society for all. And whereas September 15th is significant as a start date for the Latinx Heritage Month because it is the anniversary of independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, uh, Mexico, and Chile as they celebrate their independence on the 16th and 18th of September, respective, respectfully. And whereas Latinx's are a significant part of McMinnville's population and influence the, the fiber and fabric of our community with contributions to McMinnville's arts, businesses, restaurants, civic leadership, education, and overall cultural. And therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim the period between the 15th of September and October 15th, 2021 as Latinx Heritage Month. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand this the 28th day of September in the year 2021. Signed, Scott A. Hill. So thank you for allowing me to, uh, give both of those proclamations, uh, today. Uh, our next, uh, our next area of business this evening would be comments from our community members. And anyone that would like to provide, uh, comments, uh, uh, provide comments, uh, may do so. And, uh, we will hear comments, but we will not respond to those comments. And any follow-up would be done by assigned members of the city staff. So anyone that would like to speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, uh, may be able to do that. You can speak for three minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record. And if there, I don't see anyone on the phone. So what I'll do at this point is, uh, Claudia, anyone to, to speak to the council on public, uh, comments this evening?
No mayor and council.
Thank you, Claudia. Okay, that takes us to our next item of business. And that's going to be a presentation this evening. And that'll be a presentation on the Campfire Columbia Presentations. And so I'm going to call on our Parks and Recreations Director Susan Muir to, to present. This is the program that has, we've worked with, with, uh, kids on the block. And we're going to do an update and a presentation. So Susan, we'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Susan. And Mayor, just briefly, uh, for the record, please note that Councilors Peralta and Garvin joined the meeting during the reading of the first proclamation.
Thank you, Jeff. And so we'll note that on the record. Okay, Susan, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. Hearing your, uh, work session on alignment and core values, I just want to take a minute to thank those of you who have helped on this project from the very beginning. And I think Mayor, um, you coming to the KOB TAC meetings and Counselor Garvin, you being on the KOB TAC and Counselor Geary for helping carry the message with the school district. I just want to say thank you because I have felt that alignment as we moved through this. And it was, um, it was not a small project to get through. And so tonight, you saw I had a bunch of history in the staff report that I submitted. Tonight is really an opportunity for me to introduce Campfire and their leadership to you all. Um, so I want to take a minute and introduce Josh Todd, who's the president and CEO of Campfire Columbia. Hi, Josh. And John Myers, who is the before and after school department director. Hi, John. These two folks have worked really hard to get the Campfire Columbia After School Program up and running here in McMinnville. And I, the part that I want to just emphasize before they give, uh, some information to you about their program is, when I look through the KOB Technical Advisory Committee recommendation, the issues that we were tasked to address a few years ago included improving communication with families, creating financial stability, um, really aligning the calendar with the after-school program, with the calendar of the school district, um, and focusing on those from opportunity and embracing removing barriers and valuing equity and diversity. And we had, uh, several respondents to the RFP. But I will say that, um, Campfire Columbia had all of those, uh, baked into their model program. And so I could see the transition being, um, where we wanted to be happen faster with Campfire Columbia coming in and doing this. So, um, I know there's been some challenges. I listed those in the staff report. COVID continues to be a challenge for us in the hiring market as a city. We are challenged. And I know Campfire has faced some of those challenges as well. With that little introduction, I want to turn it over to Josh and John to really introduce their organization to you and talk a little bit about what they're doing here in McMinnville.
Thanks so much, Susan.
Go ahead, Josh and John. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Uh, city council members, thank you for having us here tonight. For the record, my name is Joshua Todd. I'm the president and CEO of Campfire Columbia. Uh, I live in Portland, Oregon. For those of you that may not know, Campfire Columbia has been actively serving kids and families in, uh, Oregon since, uh, 1911. We started our first programs in Forest Grove. Um, and we're really excited to be joining the McMinnville community. Uh, in 1924, we opened our overnight camp, which is Oregon's, uh, one of Oregon's oldest overnight camps, Camp Namanu in Sandy, Oregon. And currently, our BAS program, which started about 20 years ago, serves three districts and 21 schools. Uh, in total, Campfire Columbia serves over 4,000 youth a year. And that's in five districts and 28 schools across the Portland metro area, Clackamas, Yamhill, and Washington counties. One of the pieces that I wanted to share, and John's going to talk more about program, which actually just opened yesterday, uh, in McMinnville. So we're excited for that. Um, but talk to you about our values as an organization. We really believe in investing in communities. We're not just, uh, here to provide childcare. But we really want to create opportunities for developmental growth of kids, academic support, and spark finding, which for us is that, that thing that gets a young person excited, that helps them stay connected and committed to school, uh, to the things that are, they're passionate about. So we really build program around the kids in front of us. This isn't a cookie cutter model that we bring, you know, a program to every community that looks exactly the same. Every one of our sites looks different because it's based on the interests of the kids that show up and the staff that we have. Uh, and they get to create their own, uh, learning opportunities, their own clubs, uh, based on their interests. And we believe that that really makes the difference in helping kids be successful, stay engaged at school, uh, and, and do really well in our programs. We also have a very strong focus on inclusion and equity. And for us, that really starts with our staff. So one of the things, uh, that I wanted to highlight for you is while we are, um, like everyone, facing struggles to find staff, um, we have made the commitment to investing in the people who will be showing up for McMinnville's families and children. Um, our minimum wage at Campfire Columbia for our program specialists is $18.40 an hour. Um, all of our staff who have, uh, work at least 20 hours receive full benefits, including healthcare, vision, dental, 3% investment, not match, 3% investment into an retirement account, even if they're not contributing because we want them to be able to develop wealth as they, uh, continue with us and see this as a career. And, you know, we are doing that because we believe that the best way for us to provide high-quality care to kids is to provide high-quality care for our employees. And we're excited to be in McMinnville. We're excited to develop our partnerships with Lynnfield University and Chremecan Community College, Yamhill Valley Campus. And we believe that over time, those will create really strong pathways, uh, into living wage employment with Campfire, supporting the six schools in the McMinnville School District. Um, I also wanted to point out one last thing before I turn it over to John that we're very excited about. You know, one of the nice parts about being a nonprofit is that we know how to do fundraising. Uh, we are committed to, while, you know, our, our goal is to show up and provide care. If we could do that for free, we would. And so we look for grants, we look for resources to make childcare as affordable for families as possible. Uh, and just last week, the state of Oregon announced their childcare stabilization grants, which we will be applying for to support families in McMinnville. And right now, um, based on our calculations, and we'll have to wait to see what we're approved for. But it looks like we could be able to bring over $600,000 in federal funds to just the McMinnville community to make childcare more affordable during these really difficult times with COVID. And so we will be prioritizing those funds for low-income families and families who've been struggling with COVID. And we're really excited to be able to do that. So, um, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our department director, John Myers. Um, he has a very long history, uh, working in childcare, uh, and knows way more about this than I will probably ever, uh, learn or be able to forget. So I'm going to turn it over to John.
Thank you, Josh, and welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor Hill and council members. Uh, my name's John Myers. I'm, uh, here in Portland, Oregon. I'm excited to be here. Uh, really appreciate the, uh, opportunity to kind of talk about some of our programming and where we've been. Thank you to Susan for the partnership, um, throughout this whole process, um, and allowing us to, to kind of, as Josh mentioned, lead with our values and, and become integrated in the, um, community of McMinnville. We're really excited. As Josh mentioned, um, we did start yesterday, uh, in two different schools in the McMinnville School District. We're at, uh, Sioux Buell and Grand Haven, registered 31 students. Um, and we're excited to start our staff, um, in those programs right after the bell in the afternoon. Like Josh mentioned, we are different in each location because we want to get to know our students first and our staff so that we can kind of lean into our value of truly youth-led, uh, development programs. Um, and so they're right now building relationships. We're training up our youngest staff and we're training up our oldest students so that they can be mentors in the program. And we can teach our, our, our staff to be able to, uh, provide the programming, um, that Campfire brings every single day. So, you know, two days in, uh, I've already been able to be at both locations twice, um, both Monday and Tuesday to see how our staff are doing and start building relationships with both families and students. And it's going really well. So some of the things that we have been able to do, even during a labor shortage and, and, you know, some challenges around staffing is, uh, bring in 11, uh, staff to both, uh, positions or to both schools, uh, spread out. We have one multiple site coordinator, uh, a native Spanish speaker, there's Beth, who will support all of the, the locations, um, as a leadership position. Two site supervisors, one at each Buell and Grand Haven, who are salary positions year-round full-time and will support those programs. They've already started connecting with the principals to develop ways that they can create some referral systems uh, within each school community and reach out to the, the priority families to be able to integrate them into the program. So that we can build those programs and connect with families on a deeper level. Uh, we have six program aides, which is our entry-level program, uh, position, and one program specialist. Of those 11, um, staff members, seven of them are native Spanish-speaking, uh, to be able to communicate with, uh, the families on a direct level as well as support students and being able to see themselves in people that they look up to. This just last month, uh, to be able to get families kick-started into program, uh, through our collective care model and program, we've been able to support and subsidy programming, uh, about $2,000, uh, for the, the month of October. Um, and that's 30% of the, the folks that are registered in our programs. So, you know, right now, they're really just developing, uh, curriculum models so that. really just developing curriculum models so that we can roll that out every single day. We're working with Nutritional Services to be able to support them with the resource of food and connecting with the school district staff to be able to provide quality youth development programs at each location. I've got the program aides, the entry level position, have been the most hired at this point. And so my plan is to train them up at each location. And then we've got two interviews for site supervisor positions. And once we're able to go through that process and qualify them with the state of Oregon, we'll easily be able to roll those out and open more programs. And the goal with all of them very soon so that we can meet the deadline for the stabilization grants, as well as support all of the families in the school district that need childcare.
Thank you, John. Let's open it up for questions of of Josh or John as it relates to Campfire program and its involvement in our after school program Kids on the Block. Any questions?
Mayor, can I just add one thing as well?
Absolutely, Susan.
Watching, you know, as a childcare provider, the city of McMinnville was what they call license exempt. And while Oregon asked at the assessment of our program, they said, really, you meet you meet the standards that those would be required if we were licensing. But since then, watching Campfire Columbia go through the state licensing procedure over the last, gosh, we've probably been working on it four or five months, I think, John. The rigor under which those standards are applied to licensed care providers is has been eye opening for me, I think, and eye opening for the school district as well in terms of inspections and seeing the program operating online. So in some respects, the the oversight for licensing programs and the rigor that they have to go through is so different than what we had to go through. Although we met the same guidelines, the way they have to demonstrate it takes so much time and energy. And it wasn't that part wasn't easy, but it's been eye opening as well.
Thank you, Susan. And just because we're in the midst of budget deliberations and some of the things, I know in your report, you kind of summarized that the budget for this year is about $560,000 with the Campfire group. And $100,000 of that's being put into scholarships, and the majority of that money is coming from tuition and from the KOB fund that from the mayor's balls of times past. Anything more you'd like to share on that, just in that we have this financial hat on a little bit?
Yes. And keep in mind, the whole reason we did this was for financial stability because we saw the end of the road for that money that KOB Inc. had raised. The five about $560,000 number that was in the staff report, that's actually the remaining budget that KOB Inc. controls. I'm happy to say that the KOB Inc. board has awarded $100,000 of that to Campfire Columbia for them to put to use on on grants. And we hope that that will continue so that they can also help bridge that gap. And I think there's there's a lot of opportunities, as both Josh and John said, to get additional money and to also leverage that money for additional funds. So that's all I would add to that, Mayor. And really appreciate the partnership with KOB Inc. as well.
Absolutely. Thank you for that clarification. Again, I'll ask any, okay, I've got, well, let's see, Zach first, then Adam, and then Sal. Zach?
I'll defer to Garvin and Sal. I've had enough time with with KOB. But I have a couple of questions, but I'll let Garvin go first.
Go ahead, Adam.
I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to say thanks for coming on board and the service you're providing to the citizens. I've gotten positive feedback from parents. Being a past KOB kid, it's it's nice to see that, you know, in COVID times and the staffing issues that you guys are facing, all of you guys are doing a great job of transition. So keep up good work and look forward to seeing more sites get operational.
Thank you, Adam. Sal?
Thank you, Mayor. Garvin, that was a nice ride behind your head there on that screen. No, I'd like to join Adam in in thanking you folks for your work and welcoming you to the to the community in terms of helping us to solve this significant problem. The one question that I had is, is has the work that we've done, do we anticipate that that has stabilized the situation with KOB going forward? Have we done, has what, has the transition that's needed to happen, happened, particularly in the light of the challenges that COVID has presented?
That that's a really good question. I can, Josh, I'll jump in and just give the the overall perspective. So as far as the city's finances are concerned, we have solved that problem. I think the challenge now has been that Campfire has some of the components in their programs, such as full cost recovery, which is one of the things we were trying to get to in KOB. And then focusing and leveraging those resources that they are receiving for scholarships for those most in need. So yes, we've solved that cliff problem for the city, and we are trying to address it for the community in the form of scholarships and KOB Inc. to make sure that those that really need that financial support can get it. Remember, we had our fees artificially low for everybody. And that's what we found out through the audit. What we needed to do was increase and do make sure we were charging the actual cost of childcare for those who could afford it and then subsidize those who could not. And frankly, that that is Campfire's model. If I can, if I could speak for you, Josh and John, that's that's the way they run their program.
Yeah, I will add a little bit to that. One of the ways that we actually organize our programs is really helping families think of themselves as a collective and coming together to support each other. The cost of childcare, especially in Oregon, given the state guidelines, is incredibly high. Oregon is one of the most expensive states in the country for childcare. And so what we have done is create something called the collective care model, where we ask families, what would be affordable for you? Here's what the rate is. If you could afford more, we make the promise that every single dollar goes directly back to a family in your community. And so what we're able to do as a nonprofit is offer, you know, you pay your tuition. If you can pay more than that, everything on top of tuition is a charitable donation that you'll get a tax write off for, and we will commit to sending those dollars back to your community. So we have launched the collective care model in McMinnville. We've had many families that have been willing to donate. That is one way that we try and stabilize access to childcare resources. We also do prioritize our support to families who are low income, families who are supporting foster youth, as well as BIPOC families and families in single parent situations. Because we know from data and in our partnership with school districts that some of those populations are the ones that we see struggle the most in school. And we see ourselves as a partner with the schools in helping support kids. So those are just some of the things that we have in place, as well as the grant writing and kind of federal support that we bring in through employment related daycare and other federal programs trying to get as many resources. Again, if we could, we would be providing childcare for free because what John's team does really changes kids' lives and really supports families getting back to work and being able to to live their best life. So we look for all the ways to bring those resources into the communities we serve.
Thank you.
I'll jump in. Thank you. It's nice to finally meet and hear from you guys. I've traded several emails. And first, my sharing the thanks. And Susan, good, great, great, great work for the huge lift. And 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 Josh and John, good luck and on your big lift after here. I also wish I skipped a week on my suit and I wore this ratty old jacket. But Josh, you're looking great, man. Woo! You know, I just also just grateful for your organization to come in and be experts at delivering this service. You know, we're going to jump into our core services discussion to talk about what we're good at, what we should be focusing on, and what we aren't good at and shouldn't be focusing on. And you guys are good and focused at what you're doing. And it is such a joy to have you deliver that service in our city. And because at the end of the day, the kids are the ones that benefit from it, regardless of who's offering the service. And you guys are the best suited for it. And it's it's just really appreciated. So thank you for being here. A couple of questions, you know, just to confirm, you guys, Campfire is its own organization, not under some big, you know, Boy Scouts or this, that, or the other? It's its own organization, correct?
We are part of a national organization, but we have our own separate 501(c)(3). So we're an affiliate of National Campfire, which is based in Kansas City, Missouri. But we are our own separate nonprofit.
Excellent. And then you've hinted at it a little bit, but you know, can you speak a little on your experience with sort of securing and delivering and connecting available monies at all sorts of levels and delivering those to kids as as an asset?
Yeah, John, do you want to talk a little bit about the amount of resource or support we provide families in our other existing programs?
Yeah, I mean, this would go back March 13, 2020, when everything was closed down. Prior to that, being in 15 locations, Portland Public Schools, nine, and Westland-Wilsonville Schools, six locations, we are able to provide about $70,000 to $100,000 of financial aid and subsidy to the students that are in those programs. You know, prioritizing applications as they come in, but also working with our culturally specific organizations and agencies as our partners to refer students and families into those programs so that we can identify families who could use those supports. I think that's why we adjusted a little bit when we had some intentionality behind just like the COVID pause and went towards that collective care model. Josh and I were able to sit down and really brainstorm and really looking forward to the future of that program as we were able to secure a fairly large grant, create some business consulting to support us through that. But yeah, previous to that, it's been through ERDC and then also just our own profit generated funds through our fee for service programs to be able to support families.
Excellent.
I will, I will say that as the the focus on childcare has become more intense around the need for childcare for people to be able to get back to work post-COVID, we are seeing more opportunities for both state and federal grants. And so we do maintain a full time grant manager who is onsite so that we can jump on opportunities really quickly. And that we've been able to make really great advantage of during COVID is seeing when those resources come out, having an eye on being able to go after those, and then going after as many funds as we can from both early learning division, but also any federal funds that flow through the state. So that has been a new thing for us since COVID has happened, that there's been more attention and focus on funding for childcare.
That's fantastic.
If I could add one more thing, counsel?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, you know, we we made an effort to to open really intentionally after the closures. We did open one program August 2020 to support distance learning in Westland and continued intentionally to open programs, which has allowed us to leverage some of those ELD grants because they required folks to be open. So that's been really, really helpful, especially as we see our way into stage six and potentially beyond.
Excellent. Two more quick, quick, quick ones. I know you guys have hinted at it, and it's just a part of it is in the answer because you've hinted at it so much that it's just so ingrained in your organization. But maybe talk a little bit about the ways in which almost everything you do, or if not everything you do, is is through that DEI lens and how that is just sort of core to your mission and values. And maybe talk a little bit about that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. In the specific context of BAS, it starts with our staff right from our hiring process. We are asking people to think through how their understanding of racial justice and equity shows up in their work with young children. It is with our families. We do not, children live in the world and they actually pay attention to a lot of what's happening. So we have really skilled professionals who are able at a developmentally appropriate level to talk to kids about what's happening in the world. When the George Floyd protests were happening, we were able to have conversations with the kids in our programs about what that felt like, what that, you know, what they were thinking, having them understand what was happening in the world. John's team has worked with a local black owned bookstore, Third Eye Books, to develop whole libraries that go to every single site that reside there so that kids see and are able to read books, kids' books that represent their culture. We made a specific attempt when we were putting together those libraries for McMinnville to ensure that our libraries in McMinnville focused on Indigenous identities, Latinx identities, Spanish language books, you know, making sure that our staff is representative of the communities that we serve, but also having a culture as an agency that really opens up and allows for everyone's gifts to be utilized to improve our services and improve what we do. And so we have a very open culture that allows for direct feedback between staff and supervisors and directors and CEO, because I believe that we're not going to fix any of these problems that we're facing unless we bring everybody's talents to that. And so really trying to facilitate that at every level, from organizational culture to relationship with parents, to the way that we talk with and engage children in programs.
Wow. That's, that's really great. And then thanks for your guys' time. One more question. It's a little bit of a three parter, so it's a cheater question. And it's a little bit more in the woo woo. But just what what does the future of sort of this new Kids on the Block program and Campfire specifically, hopefully, how does, what's the future of that look like in McMinnville specifically? And the two other parts of that are, what's the, what do you see the city of McMinnville's role in that future? And what do you see the school district's role in that future?
Yeah, I'll let John, after add anything at the end, but I, you know, I was very excited about this opportunity to move to McMinnville and to bring what we do here, partly because I knew of the long commitment that McMinnville has had to supporting childcare as a community. I think the model of KOB is is pretty remarkable and unique in the state. I think the investment that the city has made this year, $40,000 in general fund to support scholarships for families, shows the commitment that the city has, the the school district showing up with that same kind of matching investment. So long term, you know, my vision or excitement about how we show up and how we grow this program, you know, I would love, as we establish, to see and expand opportunities. You know, in our other programs, we offer drop in care. We offer in-service care. We provide special camps during the summer. We have spring break care. We have winter break care. Expanding our offerings, we have AM and PM care. Expanding our offerings as we start to grow in all of those areas are important. The other piece that we've already started is making direct connections and partnerships with local organizations. We want to be a part of the community. We don't want to be in community and and be separate from. And so looking at developing those direct partnerships with like Lynnfield University and Chomecada, so that we are both providing care, but a learning space for students, that we're providing a growth and development opportunity for young people in McMinnville who are college age, who want to become youth development professionals. That's what we do is develop young people. And that starts with, you know, young people in program, but also staff. And I would love to then be able to see and provide living wage jobs so that people who want to stay in McMinnville can, because we're able to find work that's meaningful to them, that pays them a living wage, that allows them to support themselves and their families. So that's ultimately my vision is to become a strong partner that people know and respect and turn to when they need support. That's how Campfire Columbia likes to show up in all the communities we serve. John, anything you could add?
Well, you know, we we continue to talk about community. And the way we talk to students and children and youth about community is it starts in this conversation that we're having right now and just continues to build, build, build out. And if we don't understand the core concepts of the community that we're in right now, then how can we understand the the deeper understanding of community? And so our staff are already talking with principals and developing those relationships to be able to support recess as we're understaffed in our school districts. How can we help at lunch? How can we be there to start building those relationships so that there's no gap to bridge between the end of the school day outside of the bell? And we're there and we're just part of what's going on for those kids and those families. And the way that the district can show up with us is to understand that we're here to help and that we want to engage in those tasks as we say, as safely as we can during COVID, right? And move into those greater offerings in that district's calendar, as Josh mentioned, and the morning programs, potentially in-service days, summer day camps. How can we partner with the city in sharing some space to deliver some leadership training for youth development staff and partner in wraparound service resource engagement for the entire community and just showing up as as a whole group to be able to support the city of McMinnville and the families and students within?
Thank you, John. Remy, I see your hands up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm curious, I'm, there's so many, you're hitting so many points in terms of all these, the wonderful parts of programming that you offer. And I'm curious if you also can provide some data on how some of these things are reflected in our community. So I have my screen off because I'm looking at my, I'm looking at my document. So pardon me. But for instance, and you've had, there's been so much conversation tonight around your DEI work and equity work. And so I'm wondering if you have data that talks about how your programming is comparative to the is comparative to the reflection of the community. I'm sorry, I'm stumbling with my words, but do you hear what I'm asking?
I believe so. And if not, we can follow up with additional data afterwards. But, you know, I, I will just give one example. You know, we made a point, so in our hiring processes, we have differentials built in for people who bring Spanish language or any language other than English fluency that we need in program, and we pay people extra if they're able to bring that, because we know that it is important for families to be able to have someone communicate in the language most comfortable to them. That has allowed us to hire staff that represent the community and even in the decision making process for how we chose which sites, since we couldn't open all six at once. You know, we were looking at where can we support the schools where there is a significant disparity between the student demographics and the teacher demographics, and how can Campfire staff kind of show up to kind of help bridge some of that disparity. And so those are just baked into the way that we make decisions. I can get you further information if you're wanting to know specifically about the demographics of our McMinnville staff.
And Councilor President. Oh, sorry.
Pardon me, I don't think my question was, I know my question wasn't clear. I was actually, I'm not asking about the demographics of your staff. I was actually asking about the demographics of the students. So if McMinnville is twenty eight percent Latinx, are your attendees twenty eight percent Latinx? If McMinnville has fifty percent of family below median family income is fifty percent of your student population below median family income. By example, that was really more, if you're, that's the data that I'm interested in.
Thank you, Council President Dapken. I understand now. And that is where the level of detail is not in my head. John, if you happen to know off the top of your head, what are demographics for actually youth that are enrolled looks like right now? Feel free to share. If not, we will definitely get it to you after session.
Yeah, so I don't know the exact numbers and because I'm not going to go out and count. We're definitely going to use demographic data that's shared with our, or from our families, by our families. And so I can run those reports, but we were very intentional in diving into the ODE district report cards to identify the percentage of Hispanic, Latino, Black, African American, white students within our schools. And in all of our schools, it is our goal to mirror at least the representation of the student body within our school programs. When we were offering four different summer day camps in Portland and West Lynn, we were able to support three of those schools through an enrichment grant that that was able to mirror or better the, the demographics of the school. And like I said, connecting with our culturally specific partners in our other districts has helped us achieve those goals. So I can run that data on the thirty one students and we can compare it to the students that are within the school buildings. But now that we're jumping into program and after the second day, and like I said, connecting with those principals and admin staff to to build referrals and work with families and, you know, waive registration fees and over time get rid of registration fees to to remove barriers. So families can just jump right into program and we connect with them so they see us as a resource as opposed to an obstacle to get in.
And I would just add, Council President Dabkin, we asked Campfire contractually to provide us that data as part of our contribution of the forty thousand dollar general fund and also KOB Inc. included it in their grant award that we would get quarterly reports that would include the balance of the grant broken down by each school, including number of families awarded scholarships, income groupings of those families and the demographic information. So I think what I could do is forward that information on quarterly to the city council through email so that you can see how it's progressing and it'll be the same information for us as staff, for you as council, and for KOB Inc. as part of their work as well, if that would work.
Yeah, I think that would be fantastic. You know, more of the work that I do is with housing and low income families. And so that's some of the data that we look at really regularly is how the demographics of some of those families are reflected in the community. And it's something that we specifically look at when we're looking at unhoused populations and what are those demographics. So that's, it's a very, it's a pattern of thinking that I'm really used to. And so that would be great. And then how much, so I read the forty thousand that we're contributing throughout the report. But either I didn't read or I missed it or I've forgotten it. What's the school district contribution?
They are contributing the same that they contributed to KOB, which is the space is free, the nutrition services are free, and where applicable, the busing is free. And that has been historically basically our partnership, in addition to some resources coming from their Twenty First Century Grant, which we have not incorporated that yet into camp.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? Josh and John, thank you.
And I did, I didn't, oh, what's the value? Am I freezing? Shoot.
Yeah. I see movement now, Remy.
I'm, I'm trying to chat with Claudia. What's the value of that contribution?
I have that. I can email that to you. I do not have it at my fingertips. It was part of the analysis for the Oregon Ask assessment, so I will get that and send it to you.
Okay, I did, I did read those three things. I knew those three things. And then my last question, if I'm not frozen, is what tools can you offer us? And again, my, I'm often thinking about this from my, from the work with housing and unhoused. What tools can you offer us or what do you know about in kind of your, your sphere? In terms of reaching our most vulnerable students, what programming or what should we be thinking and talking about when we're having those conversations?
John, do you want to take that one?
Forgive me, Council. I, I don't know if I understand the question. What tools should y'all be talking about in, in your work or what tools should we be talking about together?
I would say from kind of my standpoint, what tools can you offer out up in terms of any of those options? What should we as a city be thinking about in terms of reaching our most, our most vulnerable and most underprivileged students? I've heard, I heard the programming that, that you do, and so that's, and you know, I think I'm interested in that data, which is related to that. But what other programs are available out there? What, what other information can you share with us as a city? Because we, we have such a great childcare need here, as I'm sure everywhere does. And the work that you're doing is so important in that, and you are meeting a huge need here. And we know there is more need, especially with our most vulnerable and our most low income families. So as childcare professionals and as in this business, what else should we be thinking and talking about?
So I can actually respond to that now that I think I understand the question a little bit better. I mean, and this isn't a pitch just for Campfire programming, but one of the models that we've been dreaming about, Campfire also provides middle school and high school programming, and it's in partnership with the school districts where they actually identify the students that are the ones least connected to the school, who aren't succeeding, or the school isn't succeeding them. They're not connecting with teachers. And so we end up creating youth advocates that go in and are actually school based. Campfire has staff in five middle schools and two high schools in three districts. And those are embedded staff who work side by side with students. They have a caseload of thirty students. During COVID, they were going and delivering toilet papers to families. They were helping get computers to families. They were being, you know, we had so many stories of school districts calling us and saying, you know, we haven't heard from student A, B, and C. And they're like, oh, they're in our group every day. And so we were able to build that connection. There is, there is something about, most of our staff are, tend to be younger professionals. And having that near peer really helps to connect in. So I would say one model is looking at near peer opportunities where middle and high school students can work with folks that are, you know, professional, you know, educated, sometimes out of college, but close enough in age that they can connect at a different level. And especially staff who look like them or share experience with them, which is how our middle school and high school programs are built. And then they become advocates that can help broker conversations between students and teachers, help students understand things that, you know, concepts that they're struggling with, build a supportive culture, that place that makes kids want to show up to school because they know I've got this place I go to that I really love. We call, we call that their spark. I'd say anything you can do to help young people who are marginalized find something that they're passionate about, that is what we use to kind of connect kids back in and get something that can tie them closer to the adults around them and support their long term success.
Council President Dabkin, I would add, this is one of the most difficult parts of all of Parks and Rec is trying to find those folks that will come in and get scholarships and can engage in our programs. I know John is planning on sending some staff out to work directly with the school leadership as well. That's something that we try to do is connect with the principals and other teachers to say, hey, who can we really look at for scholarshiping? Can you send them to us? We've learned a lot about how things travel in different cultures, including word of mouth, including using apps instead of, you know, paper. And so we are learning all of that, and I feel like we are connecting, we're making a great connection with Campfire. So we'll learn a lot from them and hopefully they'll learn a lot from us, and we will be able to just leverage that relationship to really find those. Because we, we try all the time to think, how can we do that better? How can we reach those families that don't know about our programs, that don't know we have scholarships for these things? And it's, it's a challenge for sure.
Thank you, Susan.
Is Campfire on Discord? Anyone? No? Okay. Just, thank you very much. Thank you for helping us meet this need in our community and for all the work that you're doing beyond caring for children. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Susan.
Mayor, I just want to point out that I noticed that Janet Adams has come on to the Zoom meeting here, and we haven't seen Janet for a long time. And Janet is now working for Campfire up in Washington. So hi Janet, thanks for popping in to, to see us and we miss you.
Absolutely, Janet. With that, I know this report has taken a bit to, to share what's been happening, but this has been a long process for us. We've put tremendous time in from a council and a staff perspective. We've had consultants and we now have the solution that we feel is going to take us on for many years to come. And so thank you, Josh and John. There seems to be a great alignment between who and what you do and what we need here in McMinnville. We've always taken great pride of, of the city taking some bit of an ownership. But the sustainability of that was getting very difficult from a staffing perspective and a staff perspective. And you have just taken tremendous lifts off of our shoulders. And again, to hear Adam and Zach, who have been very connected to the program, asking a lot of questions because they were a part of that group that moved us forward. Again, thank you. We, I'm sure a part of our contract is having at least an annual review of where we are. And we're only two days into it, so much more to come, I'm sure. Thank you, you two. Okay, our next presentation, yes. Our next presentation this evening is going to be McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, MEDP's annual report. And we will call on Planning Director Heather Richards to get us started. Heather?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilors. That was a great conversation and definitely a conversation we have in economic development right now. Childcare has been a prominent barrier for people returning back to work. I wanted to let everyone know that the county has set aside two point three million dollars of their ARPA funds as grants for childcare in the, in the effort to prop up more childcare agencies and also provide scholarships for people who need them. So just to segue that conversation. I'm going to be giving the annual report tonight for the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership. But I want to let you know Heather Hadley Blank and Taylor Brisbane are both on this call as well. And they're the staff for MEDP and really the engine that makes it run. So if I get anything wrong, they can either correct me as we go or just pretend they didn't hear it that way. I am going to share a screening with you. So this is our annual report to the city council. It's, we have, our fiscal year is October through September. So we're nearing the end of our fiscal year. And in terms of the numbers that we collect. But always want to remind people of this great saying that we found on a bathroom wall in one of our downtown restaurants. But McMinnville is old enough to be substantial, young enough to be ambitious, big enough to be industrious, and small enough to be friendly. And we think that sums it up in terms of McMinnville and, and all the things that we offer. And it's, it's the story that we tell when we're visiting with different businesses. So a couple of numbers, the total employees in McMinnville is a little less than fifteen thousand at this point in time. We do import employees. So what that means is more people come to work in McMinnville than leave McMinnville to work somewhere else. So we are the employment center for Yam Hill County. We're employing people from all around the county and are really the hub for economic development. We have a little less than sixteen hundred businesses operating within the city. Our staff, as I told you, is Heather Hadley Blank. She was the program manager. She was a part time program manager. And then, as you all know, Scott Cooper left to go back to Arizona in February. And Heather has been our interim director. So she went from a part time program manager to a sixty hour a week interim director and has done an extraordinary job. Taylor Brisbane is our communications coordinator. She has been working with us for several years. But we just recently learned that Mac Water and Light, who by the way, John Deets is on the board. So, you know, I'm not quite so sure about this, but stole Taylor from MAC, from MEDP. And she will be joining Mac Water and Light here at the end of this week. So she is in her last week and we're sad to see her go, but glad that she's staying in the community. And then our other announcement is we have made a offer that's been accepted for our new executive director. We can't announce who it is yet because they are a director at another state agency, in another state, working for their economic development agency. Has a couple of programs and projects that she's finishing up this week, I think, and she wants to get those done before she makes the announcement. But she will be joining us in January, and we're excited to bring that type of talent to McMinnville. Our board is comprised of five of us, representing different economic interests in the city. I'm sitting on the board representing the city of McMinnville. I've done that for the past five years, and I really appreciate the opportunity to do that for our organization. And then John Deets is there for Mac Water and Light. Kelly McDonald is a founding member of the MEDP board. We just learned that he is actually transitioning out as well. We just got his resignation this week. He feels that it, now that we've made our new hire, that it's moving into its next chapter and he feels really comfortable with where the organization is. Teresa Smith is represented from McMinnville Industrial Promotions, and Mike Morris is representing the chamber on our board. It was founded in two thousand and six, and it's, we're celebrating our fifteen year anniversary this year. It's a unique setup in terms of an economic development organization. We have three primary funding partners. And that's the way it's been from the beginning. So we're not always chasing the memberships. We can actually do the work. And it's, it's the envy of many other nonprofit economic development organizations around the state. Our three funding partners are the city, McMinnville Water and Light and McMinnville Industrial Promotions. So as the city, we contribute seventy thousand to the, to the organization. McMinnville and Water Light and McMinnville Industrial Promotions are also contributing seventy thousand or more. And then we also provide free space at the Community Development Center. We think that MEDP as a partner in development services makes a lot of sense to have them there as we're all talking with new businesses or expanding businesses and trying to help them. We do have an investor circle that is contributing to the program because they see the good work that we're doing and they want to contribute to it. And this represents our investor circle of local businesses. And then we have four strategic goals that we're working on, business retention and expansion, workforce development, business attraction, and innovation development. They support our mission and our efforts, and then we also incorporate the city of McMinnville's. And then we also incorporate the city of McMinnville's MacTown 2032 Economic Development Strategic Plan into our efforts too. Our targeted industries, very similar to the strategic plan industries, is advanced manufacturing, aerospace, agribusiness, food and beverage production, research and development and technology and beyond. So business retention and expansion, that's, that's really where we focus our efforts. Most economic development and job creation in communities, up, up as much as 80%, comes from your existing business community growing and expanding. And so that business help is creating new jobs in the community. We want to make sure we're there to help these businesses expand. And when there's time when a business is looking at perhaps relocating somewhere else, we want to make sure that we're in front of them, asking them why? And is there any way that we can help them stay in McMinnville? And we've been very successful with that conversation with some significant businesses in the last couple of years where we've been able to retain some corporate headquarters that had grown out of their existing facility. And due to lack of space, was looking to move somewhere else, we were able to find them a spot in McMinnville and they continue to expand and create jobs for our workforce. Workforce development is a big discussion in economic development right now. Attracting back employees and retaining employees and then also training employees are all big dialogues that are occurring across the state and here locally too. MEDP is well-recognized for our McMinnville Works Program. That's an internship program that we've been running for many years now. And it's, it's matching young people with existing businesses. So one, they learn what the professional world looks like and the different types of industries, industries that are out there. And then also the businesses are getting, you know, a new, fresh air into their business climate, new ideas, exposure to the young minds that are coming through the program. So it's worked really well. It's actually something that was, Oregon Community Foundation came to MEDP and said, we really like that, we'd like to give you money to create a statewide program. We did that a couple of years ago. And then that was just recognized with an award and it's called the Oregon Works Program modeled after our McMinnville Works. Business attraction, this is the piece everyone typically talks about, the sexy piece, attracting that big business. It's very rare that you actually do that, but we spend a lot of time because when you find the right one, they can really make a significant impact in your community. So we work hard to respond to business interests that are either coming to us independently or through the Oregon, through a site selection process. This picture here is a picture of a 26-acre site that McMinnville Industrial Promotions owns. And is the type of site that because of the way, because of the way they're set up, we can really have the patient capital in the land and make sure we are recruiting and attracting the right business for McMinnville. McMinnville Industrial Promotions is a very unique setup in terms of having that local shareholder and investment in industrial development in the community. And then innovation development. So economic development is all about innovation these days. It's the future of our economy. And MEDP is at the forefront of that discussion, working with our businesses on how to bring innovation to them or support them in innovation and continually to sort of push new ideas into the community in terms of opportunities that would be available for businesses. So by the numbers, I think this is very interesting. So we've been in COVID, but in our, in our economic development world, things are moving quite well. If you'll notice, a lot of these numbers have tripled in terms of our business retention and expansion. Heather and Taylor have been working hard on working with our business community. There's businesses looking at their next chapter and what they want to be doing as we come out of COVID. And so we spent a lot of time visiting with them and, and asking the question, what can we do to help you? What do you need from us? And really trying to respond to that. Workforce development, we, our internship program, even with COVID, did very well in terms of our applicants that we're reaching and we're generating more interest from around the state. So we're, we're bringing in a, a bigger talent pool now for our local community. And then we're also involved in several professional development programs. And then business attraction, there is a, I think what Heather has learned as soon as she's the intern director is we get a lot of site leads from the state and we're always looking through them and vetting them and, and talking about what's the best match for McMinnville? Does this make sense? Should we respond to this? And how to put our best foot forward so we can get the best businesses into town? So we've been working diligently on that over the past year as well. And then innovation, this is where we've really sort of escalated our efforts. We have partnered with Launch Mid Valley on an entrepreneurial program. And we've been trying to bring program, different programs into the community so we can expose our business community to more innovation opportunities and resources. We work hard on marketing. A big part of economic development is telling your story so that businesses, you know, businesses want to go where other businesses are successful. And if we can tell the story of how successful McMinnville is, it also helps our businesses grow and expand. And so we've spent a lot of time, Taylor does a great job in our communication piece of it. And this is indicative of, of the different types of media that we've been doing. If you look at this, we posted 977 times over the past year. So that's about three times a day that we're making posts and stories about our business community. This is an example of one of our marketing visuals where we talk about how McMinnville is really, we see all the quality of life initiatives as well as all sort of the bottom-line business support tools that the businesses need to succeed. And you can find that here in McMinnville. And this is illustrative of where those two combined here. This is an ad that we put together that's sort of builds on a, a relationship that we're developing with Visit McMinnville, which is, you know, if you love visiting here, this is also a great place to locate your business or grow your business. And recently we've been doing as part of our innovation discussions, pub talks. This is one that just happened last week, I think, called Boss Ladies. I love that, but it's all about female business owners and entrepreneurs getting together and talking about how they can support each other and what worked for them and what sorts of resources are out there. So even in COVID, great turnout for this type of program. This is illustrative of our partnership with Launch Mid Valley. And it's a Marion Pope Yamhill program. And it's, it's all about innovation and entrepreneurial development. And we have started here locally what we call Coffee Club for Startups. And that's the third Tuesday of the month at nine o'clock. So that is our MEDP story in terms of our annual report to you. And I'm happy to answer any questions for you or Heather and Taylor are also available for that.
Thank you Heather for putting that together for us for the annual report. Let's open it up for council to ask questions at this time. Your, your graphics and the kinds of information you include in your annual report, Heather, are so helpful to know what's going on. Sal, you have your hand up?
No questions Mayor, but I did just want to thank Heather for everything you're doing. It seems like you've got a hand in just about everything that happens in this community. And, and just want to say that I appreciate the work of the organization as well. Been a very great success story for the city for many years.
Yes, thank you. And, and actually, I, I, all I'm doing is carrying forward what Heather Hadley-Blank and Taylor have been working so hard on. And I'm trying my best to support them as, as we go through some staffing challenges at MEDP. But thank you for that, Sal.
Any other questions? I, I would, I would wish Taylor's success in her move over to, to McMinnville Water and Light and the role she, she'll be playing there. And Heather, you know, as I indicated, John Dietz, myself and Heather Blank, we, we meet on a monthly basis. And as the reports show, there is such a strong desire to be here in McMinnville with the, the infrastructure that we have in place, the land we have in place. So again, I think we can take great, I, I think we can be very excited with the, the assets that we have on the, the table. We just need to be cautious in bringing the right type of business to the, to the community to grow those market sector jobs that bring livable wages. I think that's very important. And over the years, when Jody Christensen, you know, made these commitments of the kinds of jobs that were coming by a certain time, we're still well on that, that path moving forward. So again, Heather, Heather, Taylor, thank you for the report. And it was, it, it was a good reporting fiscal year for you. Thank you.
It was. And just one last thing that I forgot to say is that the, the annual report, the product itself, will be out October 1. And we'll send that forward in your next staff, your next meeting packet we wanted to present tonight as part of the National Manufacturing Day proclamation.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is I will be calling to order the Joint City Council and Budget Committee work session. And a part of that, we're going to be talking about our city core services. Information's been sent out. I think we had about a week, a week and a half to two weeks lead time on that. But I'll turn this portion over to Jeff Towery to introduce the topic. So Jeff?
Thank you Mayor, members of the council, members of the budget committee. At, at your request and direction during the last budget committee process, we launched what has been kind of a summer into fall-long effort to bring together a variety of pieces of information to help the council and the budget committee craft a long-term sustainable financing opportunities for the city's funds. We reflect back to the city's strategic plan that was adopted a couple of years ago and the strategic priority, city government capacity with a goal to strengthen the city's ability to prioritize and deliver municipal services with discipline and focus. And one of the objectives was to identify and focus on the city's core services. So we've presented to you our list of 145 core services that are prioritized and also categorized by the existing status of the service level, below base, base, mid-level and optimal. Just to look back in time a little bit, about a year or so ago, we convened a team of staff from across the organization led by Library Director Jenny Berg, who designed the first tool that was used to identify core services by department. And that information was incorporated into the current year's budget that the council and the budget committee reviewed last year. We picked up that work to, to continue the effort to show kind of a cross-functional or a cross-organizational look at the, at the core services. The executive team and other key support folks prepared the content that has been presented to you again in the, in the course of 145 different core services. Myself and the city attorney at the request or delegation of the executive team actually took a first crack at prioritizing the core services from top to bottom. We provided that to the full executive team in a review and then went back at it one more time and prepared the final list. We also have executive team buy-in for the product that's in front of you this evening. I was trying to think of the right metaphor to help explain what this, what this product is and, and what it isn't. It's not intended to be a perfect solution or a perfect tool. And I'm taking a little bit of a risk because I'm going to go sports metaphor and I know that's not necessarily going to resonate with everybody in the room. I see a smile on Counselor Gary. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to hit, hit it out of the park for you, so to speak. That's baseball. Basketball though, National Championship Basketball Tournament, both men's and women's, it's called March Madness. It's a 64-team tournament. And those 64 teams are selected and ranked 1 through 64 every year. There is always a lot of drama and sturm und drang about the last four teams in and the last four teams out. There's also some conversation about who got seeded fifth versus ninth? And was there a 13th seed that should have been seeded 12th? And was there a 16th seed that really should have been seeded 13th? I think that's the kind of product that we have for you. I'm not going to say we got everything in perfect order from 1 through 145. But if you look at the top 50, I think we probably have most of the top 50 right. You might be able to argue, you know, three or four should be above 50, three or four should be below 50. And I think we generally got the order right, but we may have gotten some of the seeding wrong. So it's not intended to be a perfect be-all and end-all. We're also not really asking the council to specifically weigh in on, you know, one program that's, or one service that's ranked ahead of another. It was a combination of, I think, objective and subjective criteria. We really did our best to present this information in a way that, that makes sense for us and for you. Certainly if you have questions about how the ranking was created, we're happy to answer those questions. We did do some back and forth at the executive team level. Again, as I mentioned, we, we, we took a couple of runs at this thing. I think one of the significant take-home messages though is not just the order in which we rank them, but really the level of service that we're providing. And nearly 90% of the core services that we've identified are being delivered at below base or below, or, or base level. And that means very few at, at an optimal level. I think maybe only two or three, something like that, if I, if I look back in the middle. But for us, we're looking for feedback from you today about does this information make sense? Is it useful for the council? Do you need new or different information? Or do you need it presented in a different way? I would suggest to you that you can use this information or that we will use this information, not just now, but it will help set the stage for really thoughtful and robust conversations as we build budgets for the council and budget committee to consider. And also as the council and budget committee review budget requests and make suggestions and set priorities. A couple of ways that we think we can use this product are sort of immediately in the context of the prospect of new revenue being generated. I think you're able to better explain to the community what services will be delivered for that new revenue. And that's really one of the prime goals of this particular product. But we also think it's a way to decide in which order or which kinds of priorities of services will we, will we invest in? Or will we reinvest in? And again, we're not talking about picking the first thing on the list and saying more money has to go there first. We would actually suggest that you use the level of service information in conjunction with the, the priority of services to make decisions about how you allocate resources. One example could be, you could look at the top 25 or the top 50 services and, and ask the staff to present to you a work plan or some options of how would we get every single one of those services that's currently below base to base level or better? Or how would we move every service up one level from where it is now? And we can present to you a work plan that, that explains the cost and the options and the time associated with making those levels of improvements in our, in our service delivery. So with that as an introduction and overview, most of the time we want to spend tonight is getting your reflection on this product, answering any questions you have, taking notes about what information we can bring back to you so that as you wrap up your conversation about revenues and services provided over the next month or so, you feel like we've given you the tools that really help you make those policy-level decisions. And so with that, I want to thank the entire executive team and several key other folks in the organization for helping us pull this information together and turn it over to the mayor to facilitate the Q and A. Thank you.
Thank you Jeff. This is the opportunity, I, I know we've had it for, you know, about a week and a half and there's a lot of reading, a lot of lines, small print. So it may take even more time for us to, to disseminate the information. But I'd like to open it up for council and members of the budget committee to ask any specific questions they may have of Jeff or in department head. So this is a great opportunity to ask the questions, give feedback from what you've read, get more clarification. So I'll open it up. Please use your hand because it'll take you to the top of the screen. Okay, Adam first?
Thank you Jeff, Mr. Mayor. Jeff or staff, if you could elaborate on, I mean, just a quick snapshot of the top 10. You look at number four, IT stuff. Are you ranking that there as an importance of we need to maintain that level? Or are you ranking that there as you want to get that to, to go from mid-level to optimal level from an investment?
So we, so as we rank these, we looked at sort of legal requirements, charter requirements, impact in the organization. And we, again, we rank these as, as priority orders, but we also think that the level of service is really important to take a look at. And, and, and so, you know, we think that it's pretty difficult to do almost any of the work that we do without phones and email, right? So that IT function is ranked pretty high. It's also currently at mid-level, which is better than most frankly in the town. It's also currently at mid-level, which is better than most, frankly, in the top 10 or so. And so we wouldn't necessarily recommend that's where you put your first dollars. But if you want to look at the top 10 or the top 15 or top 25 and ask our recommendations about where we would suggest investing money, we might well have some money in that. But we'd probably look at the group of services more holistically than picking one in isolation and say, let's put money into that. The reality is all 145 of these services are funded at some level or another. So they're already in your budget. There's nothing here, I mean, there, there are services that are, that are far below level that would take a lot of time and resource to get optimal. But we're also not talking about making a jump that big all at once. So we're really interested in hearing from the council, you know, what, what would be important to you as you reflect on these services? Is it moving everything to mid-level? Is it moving everything up one? And then that sort of discussion would be useful for us. But we didn't, we didn't sort of pick and choose and say, because they're in this level, this is where you have to invest the first dollars or the most dollars.
Okay. Thanks for the context and I will see what other counselors have to say, but I do have some other thoughts as well.
Thank you, Adam. Kelly, you had your hand up. And then Zach?
I guess as I looked at them, in particular, I'm speaking to the city manager and the recorder, it seemed like there were a number of different FTEs that would be added for various things. And I guess my question is kind of along the same lines as Counselor Garvin. I'm, I'm just not sure, at least initially, how far you would go with this? What, what would give you the best bang for your buck with these two particular?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a fair question. And I think it's difficult to just pick one and talk about it because so many of these services are, are sort of tied together. You know, our central services are not really standalone and, and most of our outward-facing services rely on the central services to be provided. So, you know, rather than talk about my section of the budget or Claudia's section, just let me, let me use an example. If over the course of the next several weeks of discussion and into the next budget year, we decide collectively as an organization that we want to staff up in, say, three different departments to the tune of, I don't know, 15 or 20 FTE, I'm just going to pick a number. I'll tell you right now that we probably can't fill all those positions, plus the positions we fill every year anyway, without investing in HR because it takes HR staff to, to recruit and fill positions. And so we would look at, from a staff perspective, we would probably look at this more of a package of services and how to move a group of services in, in a cluster together as opposed to picking one or the other and say, let's make an investment here, make, let's make an investment there. And, and so that's why I would encourage council and Budget Committee to think of it. I mean, we're thinking, we're talking about big numbers when we're talking about revenue solutions. And so we should be talking about, you know, large suites of services as well. And so what would it take to, again, move the top 10 or the top 20 or the top 50 all up one level? And we can give you some examples of how that might happen and where we might make the investments first, second, third, through to 15 or 20.
In that case, I'd kind of like to have a further analysis on the suites of services. I think that would be helpful.
Right.
Obviously, there's an administrative services group with the legal and, and HR and, and the others. But, and then you get into fire and police and that's a whole other ball of wax.
Right. And so, so just let me ask, what kind of information would help you? Now, in some cases, we've identified some potential investments in terms of staffing and other dollars. In other cases, we, we're not quite there yet. And we would, we would present to you, and again, whichever you, way you want us to move, we'll do the analysis and provide the data that you want. But, but understanding kind of where you want to move the services might be really helpful for us. Then we, then we can focus our effort on the, on the data and the detail that would help us move in a particular direction. For instance, if we've got, you know, we've got, I think, 23 or 25 of the top 50 services are below base. I, I don't think it's realistic to move from below base to optimal in a single year in, in most, if not any case. And so figuring out how to do that is an exercise we could go through. But if that's not where the council wants us to go, if you want us to be more incremental or more strategic, we'd focus our kind of analytical capacity on what, where you want us to go as opposed to try to cover all the potential options, if that makes a little more sense.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Zach and then Sal and then Remy?
Excellent, thank you. I'll try to be brief on this section and, and spread the love of questions and then come back. Thank you, Jeff and, and staff for this. The staff report specifically, I would say, just was super well-written and curated because what followed was a giant data dump and, and organizational spreadsheet that I actually took great joys in. And it might be the, the most fun document I've read since we've been here. Just the way that was laid out clicked in my brain and the staff report was, was, was well-written to, to kind of set me up for success to how to read that.
So before you launch too far, let me give credit to Amanda, who was the primary author of the staff report.
Oh, I'll walk back some of that enthusiasm. I don't want to see her hang another medal on her wall then. Although that, that, that is a clue as to why there's somebody here-to's, here-to-fours in there. But I think, and also some of the answer you just gave Jeff on, on, to Kelly's, it, it ties in a little bit and I think maybe less of a question, more of how I'm, how I'm thinking about approaching this and then maybe how we can stick the landing on staff direction from my point of view, is it was hard for me to, it was just fascinating to read through and then all of a sudden kind of independent of what number it was, almost hiding the numbers, just reading through everything and then kind of pulling it aside and checking where I was at and being like, oh wow, okay, that's, that's number 88. Oh, interesting, you know? And then jumping, finding, figuring out where I was. And, and so to me, the sort of top 20 versus top 25 is a little arbitrary and I think you've led to that because if you go to 20, we get to do the Parks Master Plan, but we don't get to do DEI work, right? And then if you go down to 25, we get to do DEI, but we don't get to do this other stuff, you know? So I started writing down the ones that were most interesting to me and then noticing that as, as you sprinkle, as you get through, there are Parks ones sprinkled throughout, right? 1957, 103. And those kind of dovetail together. And I would imagine there's a little bit of a snowball in efficiency and say, if you want to raise this one, it, it makes sense to do that. And so I kind of have, I have these little groupings of notes that, that are often tied to a high-up one, right? In the eight, in the 18 and the 19 level and, and then bundled together with a couple others. And so I think, you know, I've got a, a method of, of direction to say, here's, here's those bundles that I see are effective. Are, do you also see those as effective routes? Or do you, can you point out outliers in that and say, you know, that's a pretty wild hair in another direction? But, but these seven are in, in a group of, of two, two and a half areas of focus and we can actually really make some headway and, and can gain some efficiencies, which is, I think, is what you were talking about.
Yeah, I think that's fair and I think you raise a really good point. One of the things that we asked each department to do was to rank their own services and put their priorities on it. And so if there were 10 things in the police department, we worked really hard to keep those 10 things in the same order that the police department gave us, but also then make judgments about what other things should be in the middle of that list. So, and I'm not going to say we, again, that we did it perfectly. But for the most part, if you look at all the parks maintenance stuff and you pull those out, that's the order that we got those from Public Works. And, and so, for instance, you will often see, say, field, like parks maintenance, say we've got something on, on sports field or turf management, that's going to be linked pretty closely in the overall priority with the sports leagues for parks and rec because you can't really have great sports leagues if you don't have good fields. You know, fire fleet is going to be pretty close to a fire operations because if the fleet doesn't work, it can't roll to a fire. And so we did pay attention to those services that seem to be most dependent on one another. And again, we may not have nailed it perfectly every time. So you, you will see sort of a theme as you work your way through where there are things that we feel are clearly interrelated. They're going to tend to be close to one another on the list.
That helps make, make sense of that and unlock a little bit of that. You know, like I think library, just the hours of operation was, I think, their top one, right? And then a, a little bit under that, we kicked down the list another 10 or 11 on, in the city list was sort of their ability to stock the shelves and how full the shelves are, right? It's like, okay, that, that, that helps and that makes sense. So I think the only other question I would have and then, and then we could, we could go on. But the other thing that, you know, I have, my areas of what I think we should, we should be investing or moving in. Because I was looking at it as less of a, do I agree or disagree with the ranking? More of where do I think levels are? What do I think we shouldn't be investing in to move that yellow up the scale? But as we talk about what, if any yellows, we move up the scale, should we also think, and if so, how, to maintain the good investments we have done in the yellows that are adequate levels? And, or is that just sort of being done by maintaining the general fund and filling in that revenue shortfall? Or, or do we need to be putting systems in place to make sure that while we push these ones, other, other ones up, we don't fall back down the hill on some of the other ones?
Well, certainly, for those services that are at mid-level or optimal, you know, unless the council decides that's really not a high priority, we can let that slip. We could, or we can redirect funds. We would, we would take into consideration the increased cost of keeping those services stable because we won't be able to improve every service all at once. So that, again, you can see investments in places just to keep things at a static state in, in certain cases as well.
Excellent, thank you.
And let's go to Sal.
Thanks, Mayor. And, and thank you to staff for preparing this. Jeff, this, this question's really directed at you because, you know, this is the second year where we've had, I think, you kind of pushing pretty hard for a deputy city manager position under you. And this document moves that conversation forward a little bit. And honestly, you know, when I look at the rest of the document, I'm not feeling it as the number one priority or the number six priority. And I, I mean, not even close compared to some of those other things. So I guess I would like to hear you make the case for, you know, why that is the number one priority in the city relative to everything else that we have in front of us.
Well, I'm not saying that a deputy city manager is the most important thing. So I apologize for leading you to that conclusion. We rank city manager organizational and operational support as the number one service because we are a council manager form of government and the city manager is identified in the charter. The, the city manager and the recorder are required. You really don't have any other organization or the ability to hire and fire and manage or, or, or work with, you know, or, or support the council if you don't have those two positions. And so that's why they ranked highest. That doesn't mean that's the first place we would suggest.
Got it.
Investing money.
Okay, I didn't understand that piece of it. So thank you for that correction.
No, no problem. And then what I will say is, you know, frankly, my operation, my part of the operation is smaller and a little less complex. So it was easier for me to come up with some discrete staffing options for how to move across the scale than some services that are frankly much more complicated and, you know, larger in terms of the number of bodies and budget size and that sort of thing. So I think some of the smaller services, just in terms of budget impact, have a little bit more detail in them now. Our goal would be to have comparable detail across those services. It's a lot harder to get to that level of analytical detail if you've got a service that, you know, engages 10 or 12 or 15 people as, as opposed to one or two. And so that's some of the kind of inequity you see across the document in, in terms of the data.
That is a really thoughtful response, Jeff. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions? I'll go ahead and just give some insights that I saw across the, the, the working tables. First, I, I, the area of city manager and operations. And again, Jeff, thank you for that insight. I, I, you know, we talked about this a number of times of the scope of control or the number of individuals that you have under your control. And by keeping it as large as it is, you know, the ability to have the kind of impact that you want to have on your leadership team and that. So again, I recognize that. The one question that I would ask you because you've gone through that process before at Springfield, that brought you here to McMinnville where you were the assistant city manager and then they went down to a, a level of not having that. How were they able to take care of that span of control, the direct reports in Springfield? And I know that like their legal services were hired out and those types of things. So that was, that's my first question. Secondarily, I see HR as an area that has not, they're not near the optimal. They, they, they need some assistance. And I'll, I'll be the first to say for years and years and years, we have rallied around having a full-time HR director. Kelly and I will say that we've been pushing that. And so to have Kylie here full-time with the expertises that she has is so welcome. But because of the years of not having the management in that arena, I think we are solely, we are sorely behind when it comes to the way we manage our staff across the board. Some departments have a manager that does a great job and other managers don't do as good of a job. And I think we need to have a continuity there because the liability of not managing our people effectively across the spectrum is a huge liability that could cost us big dollars in the long run. So I recognize that also. The other last area that I saw and is when we're looking at park maintenance and when we're looking at facility maintenance and all of those kinds of things, you know, it takes, it takes not only personnel, but it takes equipment. It takes a lot of things to do the things that we need to do. And I think at one point many years ago, we looked at, would it be better to go out and contract services when it comes to maintenance of parks and those types of things? Because we're not paying PERS and we're not upkeeping equipment, trucks and those types of things. So I put three questions, questions all into one, one there, Jeff. So I'm sorry for that. But those were just some overviews that I saw a little bit.
That's, that's okay, Mayor. I'll try to address a couple of them. And, and again, I'm, I'm not lobbying for central service investment above and beyond or first.
Sure.
Ask specifically about central services. What I would say, if you ask for my priorities for central service investment, and, and this is only in the context of central service, I'm not saying it's more important than other things on the list. The first thing I would do is fill the vacant position that we currently have budgeted for an admin support person and, and use that person to directly support HR and the city recorder.
Okay.
Second thing I would do would be to hire a senior analyst focused on recruitment and retention of employees and dedicate that to HR. I, I, I think you would see a significant bang for the buck for those two investments. I also think that, you know, we're, you know, we're talking about the potential of, of millions of dollars to be reinvested in the general fund based on the kind of conversations we've been having. That's tens of thousands of dollars. So that's nowhere close to, you know, if, you know, if you ask us to spend money in, you know, $500,000 chunks, it's going to be spread much more broadly than just focusing there. With respect to some of the things that are substantially underfunded or have historically not happened at a real sort of centralized way, like facilities management, fleet maintenance, those kinds of things, I think part of the exercise that we would go through is not just identifying money and potential staffing, but look at the right model for delivering those services. And so if you want us to make a significant investment in facilities maintenance, which we actually think is a high priority as an executive team, we would give you a couple of models about how to do that. So you'd have options to take a look at, both in terms of how long it would take to, to make those higher investments and, and sort of what method by which you would deliver the services. Likewise, with fleet, I mean, that's at parks maintenance. So there, there are different ways to deliver those services. We already use a combination of ways in parks maintenance. We have regular full-time staff. We have contract employees who provide, who provide treat care. We have seasonal employees that help us in the, in the community and the neighborhood parks and our landscaping strips. So we really already have kind of a three-pronged approach for providing those kind of services. We have our own mechanic who does certain, certain repairs and we contract out and we send things to specialized mechanics when we need to. So we're already trying to be pretty nimble about how we, how we provide a variety of services, both internally and externally facing in the organization. I think I hit all the components of your question. Tell me if I missed something and I'll go back at it.
No, you're, you're fine. It's just, as I looked, that broad spectrum, those are the areas. Though I think the only other one would be under HR, you know, with the COVID and the lack of being able to secure employment. I'm guessing that's adding tremendous burden to the HR function right now and it slows the whole. And it slows the whole process and our customer service down just because we can't get qualified people, I'm guessing.
Yeah, we're we're seeing the same impact in in some of the areas where we're recruiting for positions as other as other sectors are, for sure.
Thank you. Let's go up to Adam, Remy and Allison. Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few different takeaways I've had from reading over this over the last few days. You know, number one is it just looks like there's lack of, I guess, perspective from the engineering side of things. And I realize that, you know, due to not having that executive team member.
Yes, and actually, that's that's an area where, just based on the transition for, you know, Mike Bissett and then the engineering services manager, we probably need some more robust work to to refine to refine those engineering services.
Um, I kind of see that a little bit in the airport stuff, too, so.
I'm sorry, Adam, you may have actually cut out. I thought you were done. I didn't mean to interrupt, but you may have frozen a little bit.
Um, and the thing is, you know, just fire stuff hitting all the way down at, you know, basically barely making the top 10 when we we know that that creates a pretty big load on HR with the turnover we have in that department. Granted, other departments are having turnover at this point in time, but that's an ongoing ongoing thing for us for turnover. I am happy to see numbers in there as far as what things would cost to move them to base level or mid level. And I realize that we do have a redistricting on the horizon, but we've talked numerous times about a stopgap between between here and and redistricting. And tonight, when we were starting our work session at 5:30, you know, a residential structure fire tapped out less than a mile away from the station. It was like 0.8 miles away by Google Maps, walking. And you literally could have walked from City Hall to that fire before we flowed water on that fire. And I just think that's absolutely unacceptable. It caught a second house on fire due to our lack of getting getting exposures taken care of, our burnout rate on our medic units from from their peak hour utilization to just their their over their workload in general is is worrisome. So to to not even see those things in the top five is concerning to me. Um, and I would like to see some focus on those.
Well, I guess I would argue that out of 145, being top 10 is closest. That's the 93rd percentile. If you want to look at the entire list, I would encourage you to look at it in context. We could put it at number one, it's still underfunded. I mean, that's that's a reality. And so it, you know, in my mind, it doesn't matter whether it's number one or number 15 or number 45. If we're not funding it adequately, we have work to do. And I think that's part of why this is an imperfect way to rank services. You know, something that has high and high budget costs, we may or may not be able to drive that service level up as quickly as we might do something else. I mean, you might see a scenario where you might have to invest, you know, $500,000 in a single service area to move it up a single level. And then you need to decide because you've got that ability as policymakers, is that the way you want to spend that $500,000? And I'm not saying it's the wrong investment. This is just to try to capture it. So the fact that it's 10 versus first on the list doesn't really drive the investment. Again, I'm not suggesting you take your first dollar and invest it in number one and your last dollar invested in number 145. So I think I that's why I'm not as as sort of hung up on the the number ranking system as trying to make sure that we present the services in a in an understandable way and so that you understand what investments we can make in those services. So I'm I'm not I don't I hope I don't sound defensive because it doesn't really matter if it's eighth or 10th or 11th. If it's underfunded, it's underfunded. And if it's a high priority to fund, then we can provide options for how to do that.
Thank you. I do hear you, Jeff. I just think the the optics of this document is what we as policymakers, if staff are going to see as priorities to fund. And so I I guess I would candidly disagree that it shouldn't be higher on the list.
We we can make it higher on the list. And I guess we we were we were we had this conversation. Are we worried about how this looks to individuals or are we really trying to try to represent the full suite of a full city service or a full service city that we have? And we we opted to just sort of call it the way we saw it. And, you know, if it if it makes people feel better to be higher or lower on the list, that that didn't seem to be as important to us as really showing where the gaps in services are. And again, there's nothing that requires you to fund anything in any particular order. This just sort of gives you sort of the high level look at at where things are and where they're funded. In fact, I wouldn't suggest using it in order. I mean, I actually think that doesn't necess I I don't think that gives you the flexibility to to be responsive to where you feel the highest needs are in the organization and the community.
Sounds good, Jeff.
Uh, thanks, Adam. Yeah, I was just I was just going to say that I excuse me one second. Sorry about that. I had my my wife was just coming in the house right as I was talking. No, I guess I would say that I I guess I if if the document reflects the staff's opinion of what the priorities are to get funded, you know, I I guess I'm not necessarily sure sure that I agree with all of those rankings, as I mentioned earlier. But I do really appreciate getting the staff's perspective on the what would constitute an appropriate service level, a high service level, a medium service level. So, you know, in addition to the time I've spent reading this document to this point, I'm going to spend a lot more time with it just because I think it reflects a lot of knowledge and I really appreciate that. I guess from my perspective, I feel like I need more information and to kind of spend some more time before I I have a clear sense of of some of the things that we prioritize, except that I do agree with Adam's comment about fire and safety concerns. I mean, this has been a really rough year in terms of just the impact of fires on our community. And to me, it's really brought in into relief the need to address it, even though we are cash strapped. And as usual, I see more more demands for resources than we are likely to have resources. So I think we have a lot of work ahead of us. And thank you, staff, for initiating the work.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Allison and then let's go to Amanda.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I lowered my hand a couple times after you said you were going to call on me and I've been passed over a few times as well.
So we're going to go this way. We're going to go Remy because you were up earlier and then Allison and Amanda. Remy?
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sorry, I'm not meaning to jump in. I've just been holding these thoughts for a long time. You know, I I just I want to take a moment to say that I feel like we're at a really important moment philosophically for our community and for our council, especially in looking at this document. And I understand this document not to be guiding, but informative. And especially in looking at this document, it really, you know, it really brings up these huge questions. We're looking at other revenue sources. We are talking about where we can add positions to keep up and how we're going to compare that to other needs. And there's so much need and we have for years, we have always as far been kind of playing catch up on on different aspects of our of our of our budget. And, you know, we rarely have conversation about where we're wanting to cut or and and I guess it's the conversation in reverse, right? When we're making a priority list and saying, well, we want to we want to fund these things, we're at the same time deprioritizing other things in the budget. And so perhaps we are having that conversation. But the I think that those two things are those two conversations need to be happening at the same time. It is not only about our priority, it's also about what happens or what can't we do when other items fall to the bottom of the list, so to speak, or or are deemed less important. And and then I think that reaches into this larger conversation about everything that we are trying to offer as a city, but that we also need to be forward thinking in this in terms of we have an expansion before us and how is that going to materialize and how will that work well in terms of a good, thoughtful, integrated, developed community that becomes part of McMinnville? And so we have these very large philosophical questions. I I'm also very, I I'm in a very philosophical state of mind regarding what we do in in terms of fire safety because it staffing has been underfunded for years because we have these very high rates of turnover because we are primarily running EMS calls. And we know our firefighters don't love primarily running EMS calls. And because we have a fire station that needs to be replaced, there's there the it is such a large decision, really, how we move forward because it needs to be a decision not about what is going to serve McMinnville now in the short term, but what types of decisions we're making towards an investment in our future. And then I am just going to make one comment that's not on topic, but because Council government brought it up, I just want to take the opportunity to say that I also saw the chief's report on this house fires that came in. And while we're talking about response times, I also want to say that eight adults and three children lost their home tonight and the Red Cross is taking care of them. So if you're interested in reaching those families, the Red Cross is the best avenue for that. Thank you for letting me divert my comment for a moment.
Thank you, Remy. Allison?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to I may be asking a question out of inexperience and I apologize for that. But in the in the past weeks, we've been talking about sustainable funding and making up a budget gap. And I assume that we're operating at the levels presented in the core services based on the budget that was passed last year. So if we're talking about raising the levels in any of these core services, is there some pot of money somewhere else that is going to fund the raising of the levels in these core service areas? When people talk about investing in something, are they investing in it from some pot of money that I'm not aware of? I I'm just not following where the money is going to come from that's attached to many of these areas. When you look at raising it from, say, a base to a mid level, often the 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 amounts of money listed are quite sizable. So I just don't know, I I just don't have the answer to to perhaps everyone knows of some money that somewhere else that we're going to use for raising those levels. Could someone explain that to me, please?
Well, I I think that, Allison, that you're asking the exact right question. These are the services that are funded at these current levels. And if if we had this tool in place a year ago or two years ago or three years ago, you'd see others, you'd see that some of these services have slipped from maybe mid to base or from base to below base. And the revenue solutions that the council and the budget committee has been looking at are are the revenues that would be used to invest in these areas and either, you know, maintain certain things at their current level or or increase their levels of service based on the amount of money that might be gathered through the revenues that we presented to you at your most recent work session.
Does that answer the question for you, Allison?
Uh, yes, I think that that assumes we're going to raise more money than just the budget gap, which is, I think, was was part of the options presented recently.
Well, yeah, so so filling the budget gap would provide more money than we have in this year's budget. It would not be a long term solution to simply fill that gap. And it would make it more difficult to stand up programs that either really are funded at a minimal level or 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 far below the base.
Okay, let's go over to Amanda and then Meredith.
Thank you, Mayor. And Jeff, I don't want to speak out of turn, so feel free to correct anything I'm about to say since we worked on this as a team. I wanted to just go back and provide some context for how we arrived at this document and hopefully potentially provide a suggestion for what a next step could be based on some of the feedback I'm hearing from the council. So when we when we did the budget document, each department prioritized its core services without regard to funding. It was just what is your highest priority, medium high, medium and medium low? And from that document, the discussion was from the council, the direction was, we'd like to see a consolidated prioritization list that that isn't separated by departments, that is all the core services. And that's what this document is. So this document doesn't take into account, other than identifying the levels of service, it doesn't take into account where staff would recommend, you know, net new funding going. So it wouldn't necessarily be the number one is priority is the number one place to get the next amount of money if there's if such money is generated. So since phase two, I would say is here, whether or not it's fully completed yet is a question. I think a next phase could be, based on what I'm hearing, is for staff to then go review the core services prioritization list and the levels of service and then provide council a recommendation of here, based on what the core services and the current level of service, where are some areas where we see investment as appropriate in the near term? Because one of the things we were not able to do as a group, considering there's 145 listed core services, is to evaluate every single core service and what the department identified as the current level of service. We just didn't have time to do that yet. So that work could be done. One of the issues that we are running into, of course, is we are getting close to start talking about budget. We are talking about the revenue resources discussion. So time is of the essence. We also, as we can see from the core services, are spread pretty thin, but that could be a next step of of looking at the this particular core service and the level of service and to come up with suggested prioritizations based on based on the current level of service, which it sounds like maybe Counselor Gary had done some of that initially, you know, doing some bundles, as he called it, something along that line.
Thank you, Amanda. Let's go to Meredith because she's not spoken yet and then to Zach. Meredith?
Hi, I guess I don't have permission to start my video, so you can just look at my name. I, oh, I get you now. Hi. So I wanted to I I thought this document was very well organized and super helpful and a lot of the clarification tonight was really helpful. I would love to see this document referred to when we get our big budget document in the spring because Jeff mentioned that, you know, in the last few years, some of our levels have slipped from mid to base or base to below base. And so I would love to see in those summaries that each department did explaining that, you know, so saying this is providing a base level of our core services or this that would because that's what was really hard for me when I was reading the budget document, not knowing what we needed. And that's why, I mean, that's why we asked you to make this. But I would love to have that kind of analyzed every time we approve the budget, kind of just a summary of this is us moving something up to base. is us moving something up to base level when it was below base. So I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I actually was thrilled to hear that. We actually think, that, that's one of the reasons we think this, well, as it evolves and as we refine it and as we get better at presenting the information, we, we think this is going to be a useful tool on an annual basis, moving forward to be able to describe where, where we're making investments and why and what we expect the impacts to be. And then we can also see if we deliver and if we, you know, if the impacts track with the investment, that's great. If they don't, we can figure out, you know, how to do it differently. So, so we do see this as the, at the, the, what you saw at an apartment level was sort of the first generation, this is kind of 2.0. And I would guess that each year we have, you know, a 3.0 or a 2.5 or something like that. So that, that's been our goal as we, when, one of our goals as we work through this is to come up with a, with a tool that can be used over time and that is not just sort of a one-shot, big picture look.
Thank you, Meredith. Zach?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Also, after Amanda's comment, I guess you can call me the Comcast counselor, because I'm the bundler. Anyway, question, I, I have one question that popped up after hearing some discussion and it's, it's a clarification from my own mind. And then, and then a couple of statements. So is this, yes, came, came to the meeting with one thought and then heard the discussion. Now I'm making sure I understand and they're having the right thoughts. Is this list the list of priorities to get funded? Or is this list the list of most important services that we offer and where those are at? And it's our decision to say stay, increase, decrease? Or some of, or some of both? Does that, does that question make sense? Because I've just heard it referred to as, this is the list of the, of the, the priorities, most important and most in dire need to get funded? Or this is the list of most important services and, and the, the way we are going to make the decision on investments? Or neither? I guess neither could be the answer.
Probably not quite either. It is more the second than the first.
More a list of most important services and where they stand?
More, more, more like that. This is definitely not the order, I mean, reading these from one to 145 is not the order in which we would recommend at the staff level to make investments. And is, we're, we're, we're going to look at it in, in bigger chunks than, you know, one versus two, or two versus three, or two versus 10. And we'll also look at it in the context of impact on the community and impact on the organization. So it's, it's a tool that helps inform and, and maybe helps focus our attention on where, I mean, we could spend a lot of time talking about a particular service. Let's just sort of pick one out. And, you know, absent this rating, y'all might not know that, you know, you know, managing the insurance services fund is, is ranked 112th. You know, we could get wrapped around that axle in a budget committee meeting and spend 15 or 20 minutes talking about something that is 112th on the list and only occupies two tenths of one FTE's time. And so this does, I think, help show things in order of impact across the organization, you know, to, to respond in part to what Counselor Grabkin said. The things on the bottom of the list aren't necessarily unimportant, but they also get to be pretty marginal. They're, I mean, if, if you look at it through some of the detail, they're, they're pretty small pieces of the budget. You know, you might be able to eliminate eight or 10 of those things and really not drive a significant investment in another area. That doesn't mean we don't look at that periodically, but it's, it's not as simple as saying, well, let's, you know, let's take the 10 things off the bottom and take all of that money and put it into 10 things on the top. Because I'll tell you that we're already investing more money in the 10 things on the top than the 10 things on the bottom. They're not, they're not all equal opportunity consumers of, of general fund resources. So it's a, it's a little more like the second, but it's not intended to be the only tool that the council uses to make decisions. It's to help inform the decisions and the policy directive that the council and the budget committee make, but it's not intended to, you know, simply be a, a formula that you, you know, push a button and magically you build the budget around these priorities. It, it doesn't really work that way. Does that help a little bit?
That does help a lot of it. Thank you. So, okay, the statement's just kind of reflecting on some of the discussion so far, and I appreciate hearing the budget committee jump in and Allison, I think, had a great question and maybe my operating stance, especially as we are chugging through that revenue discussion, is to build new revenue tools, structures and new, new systems for new revenue, to build those and put those in place while we have this discussion about, about where we're at and, and if and how we can invest in services that we aren't currently doing an adequate level of and what those costs are, that then we could put inside of the machine of new revenue generation, either now or in two years or in three years, as the structure gets built and the machine produces or, or doesn't produce more revenue for those endeavors. I'm, I'm sitting here as, as the council, as a policymaker, as the Comcast counselor saying, you know, I'm, I'm ready for a brand new offering of, of new and important services. You know, we have a, we have COVID and, and, and what was and wasn't available to the public for different reasons, revenue, some of them, but we have a pool that isn't open on the weekends. We have, we have parks that are routinely going unmaintained. We have a library that's not open 50 hours a week. I mean, we've, you know, I'd like to have the chance to make those decisions to say, we, we need to, we need to correct that. We need this much money to do that. We need this many people to provide those services because they're super important. And this is the, this is how we need to tweak that revenue generation tool to do it. So this is, you know, all clicking together as part of that massive machine. So that, that's my hope and that's where I'm coming from. And then I think as I, as I move forward with my list of, of bundles, it, my other recommendation, as I've looked through them and seen, sorry, Jeff, I left central services out of my favorite list, but my, I, as you've talked, I recognize the importance and, and recognize that none of these can, can exist without the other. And Jeff, your comment about, yeah, if you want us to hire what accumulates to four new people or seven new people with seven new positions, we're going to need more HR for that. And, and my, my hope would be that staff can make those recommendations that if this, this group of things moves forward, we would recommend you also do this to, to allow us to do that. And, and I think that would be in there, but that would be an additional request of staff I would have is to, as you distill that, add, add things on that would make those investments make sense or, or be necessary investments, so.
Thank you. I thought Counselor Minkie was holding up her, her real hand, not her virtual hand.
Was it a fist shaking or gnashing of teeth in me?
No, it was an open, open palm, friend welcoming, not at all threatening.
It was friendly, Zach, truly it was. I tend to take the root of Amanda. I, I do think you need to go back and kind of regroup this. And I would actually like to try Zach's policy on this, since I was going through it today rather late in the game. I was thinking, I really need to be grouping these, but I wasn't doing it. So at any rate, I, I think we all need a little bit of going back and taking a look at things and having you guys come and maybe do some prioritization for us. Because I think there's a number of areas that probably need a good look. See, obviously, parks and some of those really do need to be looked at. But I am particularly concerned about, you know, some of the core services that are dealing mostly with admin, because I feel, I think we can be more efficient and I think some of the ideas are good ones. So I'd like to see some thought put into that as to what would be the most efficient use of our time and effort in that area.
Thank you, Kelly. A call for any last comments and then we'll summarize and just see what staff would, what we'll have, see if we've helped answer some of the questions that staff has and then win our next opportunity to look at it and the homework that we need to put in to be more as prepared as we can be. So any, please raise your hands if you have any comments or questions. Seeing.
Oh, I threw my, I threw my little hand up and Garvin's got his up too. I didn't want to miss a last call for comments.
Okay, so you came, you came in first, Zach, and then Adam.
Yep. So going back to the, to the staff report, you know, the, the, we were teed up for sort of the three things. Does the, does the document contain the information council wanted regarding core services? I think by and large, for me, it was all, it was all in there. As you guys alluded to, was sort of this, was this one right? Is this one 64 versus 63? That wasn't where my mind was. And so, you know, having not read every word and every line, it just kind of going from the top down in my mind on what the more important ones and reading through it, all the information I wanted and needed was there. And if I haven't read it yet, I'm sure it will be there when I read it. So I think that one is sated. If, if no, what do we need? I think it's, it's in there. There's a few that didn't have the dollar amounts and maybe those were tough ones to do, but as those, if, if those were to percolate, move, to move forward on actionable items, I'm sure that would be included in the staff report. And so how, how should we, number three, how should we use this moving forward? I sort of alluded to that in my last one, but about, you know, using this to inform our revenue discussion, are these the most important, coming up with a roadmap of, of which ones we do, what we do this year, what we set the next three years up to do to make those departments work would be it. I'm just, the main question I have for the rest of us is, how, how do we, how do we get there? How do we pick? I know Kelly has said, you know, a staff prioritization. I would like to line that up with sort of any that we've already done. And I don't know if, if council just needs more time to create their own lists or, or if we want to sort of do a, do a divide and conquer. You guys, you guys go out, staff go out of pass and, and council go out of pass and we can each just send you our own list. But, you know, mine was up there with some of the things we've already heard, number eight, fire and rescue. And I think the important one there is, is staffing and, and capturing the time between now and fire district to making a solid and safe investment and using, lumping that, seeing what the model would be to lump the safer grand into being able to, with, without a ton of out-of-pocket or new revenue needed, be able to cover that gap. And, and aside from current, current emergencies aside, that's just a, a smart investment that needs to happen to, to bridge that gap. And I, I think right now is a good opportunity to do that. You know, I also had the, some, some pieces of the library in there at, and high on my list, number eight, you know, 18 and number 29. I think those are important things to look at. I also had sort of in my next group was, was parks maintenance, 1957 and 103. And then in my head, those really work well with sort of the facilities and fleet management and fleet operation, which are 32, 40, 35 and 41, and how those, how those do or don't work together. And then sort of number 20 is a big one for me, the Parks Master Plan. And we've kind of already talked about how we can use federal monies to move that forward, but it's important to do that in context with how this all works, because if we launch forward on the cool plan of how we're going to build a new 20, 50 years worth of parks and we don't have a robust system to maintain the 20, 50 years of parks, we, we need to, you know, we're not doing, we're not building that machine wisely. And so I think that's important to do if we're going to launch that forward, which I had, had some, some good momentum on. So that's kind of my list and my, my, my response to staff specifically, and then maybe my question of where the rest of council is at. And Mayor, if you have some direction for us, that'd be great.
Okay. Let's, let's go to Adam and then we'll go to that final discussion. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I share some of Zach's sentiments as far as I feel the general information is in this document. I think staff, you did a great job of, you know, getting us a, a big picture. As far as getting fine tuned, going into the budget cycle, I, I'm weary of putting too much on your guys' plate with how thin the organization is from a staffing perspective. And so, and then also hearing the other budget committee member and kind of the expense side of things and from a few meetings back, when a few other budget committee members also mentioned the expense side of things. I, I would kind of like to see numbers as far as what it would take to, to bump some of this stuff up. And I would probably draw that lineup, top 20. And then what we would be saving capital-wise by eliminating the bottom 25 and be, have those things ready to go into the, the next, next budget cycle. But then in the same breath, I'd be ready to move forward with something out of the budget cycle as well, if there's will of the council to get some of these things brought up to sustainable level.
Thank you, Adam. So let's, let's get, let's get to a point right now. Jeff, you've, you've gotten some feedback that I think is helpful. I think council has gotten a lot of feedback that's very helpful of we needing to do a little more work on our part with the discussions that have happened. Do you, what, what's your takeaway, Jeff, from a staff's perspective right now?
So I guess I, I'd like to make sure we engage the team in some conversation without, you know, committing to a hard course of action. But I do think, you know, there are some areas where we, we clearly can refine the information in the spreadsheet to, to give you a bit more of a clear picture, you know, engineering in the airport were good examples where we just wanted to make sure we had something in the spreadsheet and we knew we had more work to do. I, I do, I do think we, we can probably spend some time putting together a couple of scenarios or a couple of what-ifs, kind of what would it take to, to say, move everything in the top 20 up one level or take everything in the top 40 that's below base and move it up to base? We could also try to cost out some of the lower level services and, and see what the impact is. I mean, the other thing about some of those low-level services, and again, they don't take a lot of time and energy, or in some cases, you know, we, we may just not be exactly deploying the right resource to them. You know, an example is, you know, the time the city recorder spends helping manage my calendar. Somebody has to manage my calendar. If we had an admin assistant, it would take some pressure off. It wouldn't necessarily mean that service wouldn't happen, but it's, you know, maybe be more right-sized in terms of how we deliver it. But let us try to sort of process the questions and comments we heard tonight and spend some time talking at an executive team level. And we can report back to you soon about kind of the next iteration of the information that we can provide to you. We definitely, the, I mean, the other thing that I'll say is you're going to have another ARPA conversation next week. You're going to start to see some areas where there's some overlap, because there are some of these services where I think you could make a legitimate argument to prioritize some of the federal funds. That gives you an opportunity to, to make sort of a midterm investment in a, in a suite of services that aren't necessarily going to be reliant on that new revenue immediately. You know, you could maybe use ARPA funds to, to start an investment in the current fiscal year and then transition to new revenue, depending on where you land on that issue in, in next fiscal year. So let us kind of mulle it over collectively as a group, but we'll see if we can bring back something that moves the conversation forward and maybe gives you a couple of examples of how, how we can use this tool in the, in the coming budget process.
And I, and then I think, Jeff, from a council's perspective, is our discussion today, it's always good to do your homework and then have a discussion and then go back and say, was, did I gather more information to me, make me more effective in my process? So from a council perspective, if we could just go back and refine, finish reading, refine what we need to do, and then we can bring all of that together with staff and with council and, and, and have a opportunity to melt those two thoughts together? Does that sound appropriate, Jeff?
Sure, that works for me. Also, just sort of as a closing comment, I, I didn't answer your question about Springfield. I didn't know that it was particularly relevant to our needs here, but the short answer is about two years after they eliminated my old position, they recreated it, so.
Okay. And, and that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to get out is, is that there, others have created and taken the will apart and, and then they come back to it a little bit because it's the way it needs to be done effectively. So that was kind of my thought a little bit towards that. Okay, any other last minute comments from council or budget committee members? And when I talk about council, I'm, I'm also talking about budget committee members. We're all a part of this process that we're going through. Thank you for a good discussion this evening and staff, thank you for, and Amanda and Jeff for putting this. And I'm sure Jennifer's been a part of this, putting this together for us. It's It's a heavy lift up to this point and more lifting that's going to be necessary. So thank you. I will now adjourn the joint city council budget committee work session at 9:21 and we will return to the regular city council meeting. Okay, our next item on the agenda is advice and information items. And so reports from counselors and committees on board assignments. And so I'll just go down the list. Chris, if you'd like to start us out this evening.
I got nada.
Okay, Kelly.
I'm back, all right. Had a YCAP meeting today. I'm going to try and be very brief. Basically, the two biggies are YCAP has joined conversations that have started about legislation and subsequent grant that awarded the city of McMinnville 1.5 million to set up a navigation center. This is YCAP's point of view. It has been identified that there are no eligible or qualified agencies to operate the navigation center in Yanhill County outside of YCAP. If the operator is not secured and the center does not open by 6:30, 22, the city of McMinnville will need to return the grant in full. YCAP is considering all proposals, reviewing funding and potential program operations. No commitments have been made at this time. There was a discussion at the meeting about this and again, no commitments or anything were discussed. I do understand there was a three hour meeting today. I imagine Heather might have been part of it, Jeff, and possibly Remy, so they may have some more to report on this. Project Turnkey opened and was officially live on September 1st after Providence had to provide a lease back to the seller on the property. YCAP sustained a direct COVID-19 emergency motelling model through the summer. The agency received a return of $1.7 million grant of CBSSP funding for COVID-19 safe sheltering, to which YCAP is committed to operating with the COVID-19 safe shelter model through December 2021. With this grant, YCAP also provided a subrecipient award to Providence to fund facility operations through that timeframe and complete critical health, safety and accessibility rehab projects that are needed on the site. I think they're trying to put in ADA compliant groups for some of the rooms that are there. During this time, all partners involved are reviewing operational plans and identifying needs for 2022. This is a new, unique project that is being undertaken. A process of learning and evaluation will be critical throughout and it is a priority to stabilize this non-congregate resource for our community. I think those are the two outstanding things since the hour grows late.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's move to Remy.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, slow on the unmute. Well, I was aware of that meeting today and I neither whittled nor pushed my way into it, so I wasn't in it. But I have good faith that there's many good things that came from it. I would have loved to have been a fly on the wall. We actually had our shortest meeting ever of the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission. We have a lot of things in progress, most of which the council is aware of. And then, as you all know, we just recently presented from the DEI advisory committee, so I'll pass on my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go to Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Landscape Review Committee recently active last week and they reviewed the landscape application for the building that's going in next to the post office on that long demolished lot. And it'll be a nice project in addition to the downtown with some working space below and living above and a beautiful landscape to boot. Then they engaged in a good conversation around code amendments and code changes and just code criteria discussion and how to go through that review, finish that review and to codify that, move that forward, which was, so it was always lively and good. Mac PAC is, after taking this month off, will be coming up on our first Thursday meeting soon. And so we'll have something to report on that as we wind down. But I think a big part of that discussion is going to be through the framework of this core services. And so you actually saw a little bit of what will be coming back to you later with some TBDs in there. So good stuff coming out of there and that's my report for the night. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. Council of Governments had our first convening that we're doing, regional convenings to have policy conversations with elected leaders. We did that on September 21st. We covered homelessness with the Mid-Millamette Homelessness Alliance. Our next convening is going to be October 28th at 3:30 and that is going to be on housing affordability in the region. We had probably 50 or 60 elected officials at the first one, including some legislators and their staff, and we're hoping to get over 100 for the next one. So I think that's a pretty good opportunity to familiarize ourselves with best practices and have good information sharing in the region. That's about it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Adam.
No meetings between our last council meeting and now. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of items from my perspective. Last Friday, I had an opportunity to meet with Betsy Emery, who's Senator Merkley's new field person for Oregon. And we spent two hours touring McMinnville and bringing her up to speed on our projects and the things that are going on. She was very impressed with McMinnville, having not spent much time here. I think she left a believer that this is the best small town in the Western United States. So that went well. Many of you will have an opportunity to meet Betsy on calls coming up. We had a robust Mack Water and Light meeting last Tuesday night. We finished our discussion and passed a 3% increase in water rates for the coming fiscal year. Again, that's helping us to prepare for some of the construction capital improvements we're going to be doing on the Willamette to start pulling water at some future date. And then Jeff and I had an opportunity last week to go to Lynnfield College, I think it was on a Thursday evening, where Senator Jackie Walters was recognized and they have her archives of information. And we just had a great open house, looking at the many accomplishments that she had done and understanding that Lynnfield will now house her archive of awards, information. That was just phenomenal. Let's go ahead and start with staff. Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let the council know that starting on Thursday through Sunday, I will be virtually attending the International Municipal Lawyers Association Annual Conference. So I will be around, but generally will be on Zoom all day.
Thank you. Thanks for representing us there. Susan.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Leland.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Leland. Let's go with Heather Richards.
Yeah, so I was in that meeting today, that three hour meeting. I just want to let everyone know it was very productive and lots of good dialogue. So I will fill folks in as we continue to work on the navigation center. I also had the opportunity, and I wanted to share this with you, because lots of comments came back to me on a tour that I had with the Housing Authority when we visited several of the manufactured homes that we've invested in through our Community Development Block Grant Housing Relocation Program. And so we visited with residents and they were very, very thankful for the opportunity to bring that program to McMinnville and their opportunity to participate in it. There was lots of households that had roofs that had leaked so much that they, you know, they had water damage inside their homes. There was windows that were essentially not sealed at all, that weather was coming into the home. So a little investment from this program has really improved people's quality of life in McMinnville and we were able to impact 39 different households. And so I wanted to pass their thanks on to you, the city council, for bringing that program into the community.
Thank you, Heather. Scott.
Nothing for the council tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Kylie.
Nothing to report from HR. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. Happy to be part of this organization, but I have nothing more to report.
Thank you. Let's go down to Jennifer.
Good evening, everyone. Just a small thing, the auditors are in-house conducting the final testing for our fiscal year 21 audit this week. And so, so far, so good. Things are going well and I appreciate all the support across the organization of being really responsive and quick whenever the auditors have questions, so that stands us in good stead. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Rich, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We're in the process of running, or in the process of running two hiring processes. One's for the battalion chief vacancy that we have and one is for four additional vacancies that we currently have on the line staff. As far as consolidation goes, we had a teleconference meeting with our consultant on Monday afternoon. Next steps will be in-pocket meetings with those districts or departments wanting to move forward with the process. So far, the only person, the only district that has decided to not participate is Dayton Fire District. That meeting will generate some serious conversation about moving forward. Some information that we received back from Amanda's team let us know that it might be difficult to word a language around the ballot measure. If one district fails, then the, and not have the rest of the district consolidation vote be successful. If it were, it might disrupt the entire process and have to reboot. Now, that doesn't mean it can't be worded, but there's a lot of work that'll have to go into the language and we'll have to work with the clerk's office at the elections office at the county to determine whether or not that's a possible or not. So if it is possible, we'll be setting up some meetings with them here in the not too distant future to see if it is even feasible. If not, special districts and some of the folks that we've been talking with, say, a smaller startup group might be a better solution rather than trying to do it with a large eight department group. So part of that dialogue with that team will be that discussion point and try and weed out folks that are really just hanging on for information or data and those that are seriously moving forward. So we have the best chance of success with the startup of the new district.
Thank you, Rich. Sal, did you have your hand up?
No, Mr. Mayor, that was a mistake. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Is Matt at the civic hall?
Yes, sir. Nothing to report on the police department.
Thank you, Matt. And then Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Two items to report. Annual International City Managers Association Conference starts on Thursday night in Portland. I'll be available periodically by cell phone and we'll check in on email every once in a while, but I'll be pretty fully consumed by the conference through midday on Wednesday. We have completed our internal interview process or our review process and interviews for public works director. I believe we have a candidate, but we still need to have a conversation with that candidate before we make any public announcements, but hope to be making an announcement soon. And given the COVID and Zoom nature of the process, we will try to figure out a way to do an in-person meet and greet for the successful candidate in the relatively near future to get folks who weren't able to participate in the process that we would typically go through on that chance. So what other items to report? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, that takes us to item number eight, the consent agenda this evening. Is there any councilor that would request any item on the consent agenda to be moved and put on the regular, its place on the regular agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
A move that we passed, the consent agenda is written.
And a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Sal and seconded by Zach. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda passes unanimously this evening, six to zero. I will now adjourn the city council meeting. It is 9:36 and we will move into executive session. Thank you all.